Good morning. We'll call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Thursday, December 9th, 2021, little after 10:00 in the morning. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via the computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santanis?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here.
Public comments, Mr. Stewart?
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an item must utilize one of the methods listed on Page 2 of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the City Council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab, or if by phone app, it will appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner, or if by telephone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. You will be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. Do we have any public comments at this time?
Yes, Mayor, we have a raise hand from Dee. Dee, if you could state your name for the record and you can go ahead and unmute and begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is Dee, AKA Doreen Bennett. I live on Beverly Street between Bixby and Woodruff. We have the Green Wolf operation just south of us, and it's still an ongoing situation. They have not been able to mitigate their odor problem.
Dee, if you could hold your comments, this is an agenda item that we're going to be discussing a little later in the meeting.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, but we certainly welcome your comments. We just need to do it at the correct time.
Okay, alrighty.
I'm going to announce that we're going to actually be doing Item C first as opposed to 4A, so it won't be long before we'll be discussing the cannabis issue.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else that has a non-agenda item they'd all like to offer public comment on?
I see no further raised hands, Mayor.
All right, well, let's move on to 4C then.
Okay, this is obviously what most people are in line for today. This is consideration possible action, consider renewals of 11 cannabis business permits CBPs for dispensary cultivation, distribution, and manufacturing uses. Of the issues, the people before us today, one is the Medicine Woman Group. It's three CBPs for dispensary manufacturing distribution for a facility at 9058 Rose Street. The second one is NC-3 Systems, DBA Deli by Caliva, one CBP to operate a cannabis dispensary facility at 9535 Artesia Boulevard, and to consider a modification application for NC-3 Systems doing businesses Deli by Caliva. The next one is Joint Forces LLC, three CBPs to operate a cannabis dispensary cultivation and distribution facility at 10040 and 10042 Artesia Place. And the last one is Dynasty Alliance Grow Inc., one CBP to operate a cannabis cultivation facility at 8832 Ramona Street. And finally, is EEL Holdings LLC, three CBPs to operate a cannabis dispensary manufacturing and distribution facility at 9032-38 Artesia Boulevard. And I guess I would recommend that we start in order and take up the first one first in order as we have them listed here.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I'm actually, I'll give the presentation on the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, will it be out of order if I can make a comment? Because my comment is going to be general among all the applications.
That's fine.
Okay. If you recall, last year when we did the process, the renewal last year, I had questions about proving of ownership last year, and we went to a lot of steps and our city attorney went to a lot of investigation and things like that. So what I was looking for back then was to expedite the process, both on the part of the applicants and also our staff, to verify that there was no change in ownership and also the control of the business with management control. So in looking at the applications this year, there's still questions about proving the ownership. So what I would ask city manager, city attorney, will it be appropriate if, what I'm looking for is, as I asked last year, is, give us a list of all those who were authorized last year, owners and their management, and then compare it to the applicant's application this year, and then certify under penalty of perjury that there was no change unless it was described above, so to speak. So to make it easier for staff and also the applicants to prove that there was no change in ownership or management control of the business, will that be helpful for everyone? Because I just want to make it simpler.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we do have a form application that was promulgated pursuant to the regulations for cannabis applications. So it's quite simple to add that particular line into that application. Obviously, that would be on a go-forward basis, but if you want it retroactively for this particular crop of applicants, we can certainly ask them to submit that sometime in January or at the end of this month or whatever in order to fully activate their permit.
So we give them about a month or two months to comply with this.
Before we issue the actual permit, the permits would expire at the end of this year, and assuming for purposes of this discussion that the council were to renew those permits, the condition of renewal would include the certification of, with regard to ownership.
Yeah, okay. I don't know what the rest of my council members think about that suggestion.
Right, so what's the, we haven't begun the process of going through the staff report. Should we act on that now or wait till the end?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my suggestion is wait till the end. When, as a uniform matter, if that's something that the City Council wants to do, we would simply add that into the conditions of approval for each one of the renewal permits.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Seiskin, go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 4C before you this morning is to consider renewal of 11 cannabis business permits, also referred to as CBPs, and these are for dispensary cultivation, distribution, and manufacturing uses in the city of Bellflower. So renewal applications and application review fees were submitted to the city from October 21st through October 25th, 2021, and all applications were received and summarized in the staff report and are also attached to this item. So there are five applicants we have that are seeking renewal of a total of 11 CBPs, and in no particular order, I will review the permities cannabis business permit details. So first, we have the Medicine Woman Group LLC. They are located at 9058 Rose Street, and they have three permits for dispensary, manufacturing, and distribution uses. All permits are currently active with the city and state, and operations of all permits have commenced. So the Medicine Woman did not note any code enforcement or law enforcement issues in the past year, and they are current on their taxes that they paid and remit to the city. So the city did review law enforcement calls for the address and found that there were calls for the location that included a customer passing counterfeit money, some smoking of cannabis, loud music, and a reported argument between two persons, but it was unknown if it was related to the property. So second, we have NC-3 Systems. They're doing business as Deli by Caliva, and they're located at 9535 Artesia Boulevard, and they have one CBP for a dispensary use. Caliva's permits with the city and state are both current, and they have been operational since November 14th, 2019. They did not note any code enforcement issues, however, they did report a few law enforcement calls, one related to vandalism, one related to theft, one involving an assailant who brandished a weapon outside of the store, one involving an unknown person in a vehicle that shot a paintball at a security guard, and then one regarding a broken window. And the city did review the law enforcement calls and confirm what was provided in the application. Further details on these calls are also in the application. But Caliva is current on the taxes that they remit to the city, and in addition to Caliva's renewal application, the permity also submitted a CBP modification application for the City Council's consideration. And the permity is seeking an ownership modification related to a few of the changes in their management team, and staff and the city attorney have reviewed the submitted application and determined it appears to satisfy the requirements of the cannabis regulations regarding a modified CBP. So the third applicant is Joint Forces LLC. They're located at 10040 and 10042 Artesia Place. The permity is seeking to renew three CBPs for dispensary, distribution, and cultivation uses. All three of these uses have commenced, and at this time, the permity is not seeking to renew its manufacturing permit. However, the permity recently submitted plans to the Planning Department to increase their current cultivation operations. As shown on their application, the permity has current dispensary, distribution, and cultivation state licenses, and there were no noted law enforcement calls at this property. However, there is an open code enforcement case relating to cannabis odors at the location, which the permity has been working to resolve. Joint Forces LLC is current with all tax payments to the city, and the city did review law enforcement calls for service at the address and found that there were no disturbance calls. Next is Dynasty Alliance Grow Inc., which is located at 8832 Ramona Street. They have one permit for cultivation. This permity is waiting for its current cultivation license from the states, and the applicant reported no code or law enforcement cases at this location. Dynasty Alliance Grow Inc. is current on its tax payments to the city, and the city did review law enforcement calls for the property, and there was one call just for a male transient that was reported setting up camp in front of the location, but the call was canceled before deputies arrived. So the final applicant here is EEL Holdings LLC, and they're doing business as Catalyst Bellflower, which is located at 9031 Artesia Boulevard. EEL Holdings has three permits for dispensary, manufacturing, and distribution uses. The applicant has current state licenses with both the state and the city, and all uses are currently operational. The applicant has no existing code enforcement cases and indicated there were no law enforcement calls for service, and EEL Holdings is current on all taxes that they remit to the city. So that completes a summary of the renewal applications for the 11 CBPs. If all of the CBPs are renewed today, then the city would collect renewal fees that total approximately $363,000, and then this is based on the annual permit fees and education fees collected per cannabis business permit. So this next slide represents the 2022 projected sales and cannabis tax that each applicant provided in their renewal application. As you can see, the total projected cannabis revenue is close to about $3.3 million, and then staff also, we did our own estimates, and we estimate about $3 million to $3.6 million in cannabis tax revenue for this next year. So based on the submitted renewal applications, staff is making the following recommendations. First, to approve renewal of three CBPs for dispensary, manufacturing, and distribution uses for the Medicine Women Group LLC, and then approve a modification application and renewal of one CBP for NC-3 Systems doing businesses Deli by Caliva for a dispensary use, approve renewal of three CBPs for dispensary cultivation and distribution uses for Joint Forces LLC, approve renewal of one cultivation CBP for Dynasty Alliance Grow Inc., and approve renewal of three CBPs for dispensary, manufacturing, and distribution uses for EEL Holdings LLC doing business as Catalyst Bellflower. So that completes my presentation, and we have staff and the applicants are also on the call and are available for any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. That was very complete. Before we begin and ask the questions, Mr. City Attorney, did you receive this copy of what we just received from 14 minutes ago? December 9th, 10:06, explains there's an ownership concern?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was aware of this verbally beforehand. I do see it now and skimming through that, I, well, I'm happy to answer the question to, or answer the question to, answer the question with regard to whether or not this concerns the City Council at the time that you want to consider this permit. Or I can answer it now.
So what I interpret this to mean, that there's some sort of conflict between the two owners of this particular establishment, and that they don't feel as though they're being included in the discussion since they changed the name of the company?
So there appears to be a civil dispute between what I understand to be former business owners with regard to this particular permity. From a legal perspective, that is a civil dispute between those partners and has nothing to do with the permit. The permit applications are signed under penalty of perjury, and so it's up to the City Council to simply take that application as to the face of it. Again, we have it under penalty of perjury, so if the applicant was imprecise, shall we say, in terms of whether or not the application is accurate, then that's something that we would turn over to law enforcement to follow up with. That would also affect a state license, since it would be something that we would report to the state. So unless this person has a court order preventing the City Council from moving forward with considering this particular permit renewal, my advice is to move forward with considering it.
A question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just, so what I'm understanding on your comments is there would be no legal or liability on us because we sound under perjury?
Correct, and not only that, but the applicant is required to defend and indemnify the city, as is all other permities with regard to any consideration of these permits.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So your advice is just move forward as though this is not appropriate for any discussion today?
Certainly, anything is appropriate if you wish to discuss.
This isn't relevant to issuing a permit today.
Correct.
Okay. All right, questions? Let's start with Sunny on the left here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Seisk for your very extensive explanation. One quick question before I start, Mr. Seisk. In your recommendation here for Joint Forces, my understanding is they're not renewing the manufacturing license permit, correct?
That's correct.
But it includes in the recommendation, approve?
That's a typo.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that.
All right.
Let me start with Medicine Woman. As far as the calls that were made to law enforcement, do you have any idea who made the calls? Are these employees? Are these the neighbors or customers? Do you have any idea? Because there's a lot of calls that were made.
Right, I know there were a few calls, it looks like, for Caliva that were actually-
No, no, Medicine Woman.
For Medicine Woman, those weren't reported in the application from the applicant. So we retrieved this information from the Public Safety Department. So Mr. Joel Hockman, if you're on the line as well, I'm not sure if we have that information available at this time, but it could be something that we could provide as a follow-up.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious, because of all the permities, they have the most number of calls.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, so it appears the calls would have been made from different kinds of individuals. For instance, a noise related to music would have been probably a neighbor as opposed to a staff member who may have called on, you know, something that was happening inside the store in the parking lot. I'm guessing it's a variety of different people that made the call.
Okay. All right, on NC-3 Systems, in the staff report, so you mentioned that there's only one new addition to the permity's key personnel. Which position is that? Is that the CEO?
That's correct.
Is that an addition or replacement of the former CEO?
The former CEO, from my understanding, is actually still in the company, but we have the applicant as well online that's able to answer, you know, any additional questions regarding that. But they indicated that there was some shifting or some movement in some of the upstream entities that have the financial interest in the permity.
Okay, so my question is, are they adding a key personnel or are they replacing one of the key personnel?
I'm happy to answer that.
Okay.
Hey there, can you hear me? This is Hersch Jane from Caliva.
Just one moment. Mr. Mayor, if we can, provide the oath to those who would like to speak before we accept testimony.
All right, so if you're going to give testimony on this item, we would ask that you stay on the line, and if you so, raise your right hand, and we're going to administer the oath by our city clerk.
Yes, if you will provide testimony, please turn on your videos now and unmute your mic. And I will call the name of the businesses if you will state your name for the record if you are representing that business. For the Medicine Woman?
Yes, Damian Collins.
For NC-3 Systems?
Hersch Jane.
For Joint Forces LLC? I believe their video is, they may be having technical difficulties. For Dynasty Alliance Grow? For EEL Holdings?
I think you can hear me, but it's not allowing me to click video. It's saying host is stopping me from... Oh, hold on. Now I think I can, let me see. Oh, there we go, start my video. Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you very much. For Joint Forces? I do see that they're on the line, but I think they're having technical difficulties. It's Jonathan Barrett and Heather Alexander, is that correct? Thank you. For Dynasty Alliance Grow? Anyone here on the line for Dynasty Alliance Grow? Can you please state your name? I believe it's, is it Berenice?
Berenice Cristerna.
Thank you very much. Okay, please raise your right hand. I will administer the oath. Do you solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give in the matter pending before the City Council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Joint Forces, are you on and able to participate in discussion?
Yes, we're here.
Thank you very much. You can go ahead and mute the microphones now.
All right, well, thank you for your participation. We're going to go back to Medicine Woman, and we're about to receive testimony from that individual, and we're going to stay with that Medicine Woman.
Yeah, I'm okay. I'm good. I'm good.
All right, so go ahead and give the testimony. You're going to answer any personnel changes on that company.
Right, happy to. Hey, everyone, Hersch Jane here, representing N3C Systems. So Troy Datcher is the new CEO of the company. He has been an addition, but the existing CEO remains with the company. So he's a new addition, but, you know, the existing CEO remains. The other thing I'll just mention about him is, you know, he came over from Clorox and was on the executive team. So he's the first major CPG executive to work in the cannabis industry. So we're just proud to have him on the team, and I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
So what is the former CEO doing now with NC-3 Systems?
He's serving in a president sort of role, so doing very similar things. So, you know, he has, you know, continued to be here since 2016 and continues to help with business expansion and development, so.
So in effect, you're adding one more person to the management team?
That's correct.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that. Okay.
Yeah.
Any other que, so let's do this. We're going to, they're in alphabetical, or they're in order that's been established by city staff. So any questions you want to ask of staff at this point, let's do it on Medicine Woman Group. And so Sunny, have you any questions on Medicine Woman?
I'm good.
Very good. Victor, have you any questions on Medicine Woman Group?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Hamada, we have any questions on Medicine Woman Group?
Just a quick one. Based on the law enforcement calls, as the applicant or the operator now, have they kept their security team at regular hours? I think it's 20, aren't they at 24? I mean, well, the whole time of the operation, of course. So I just wanted to confirm that they're keeping up with that.
Yes. The one call that we had was the group of guys that come out with the video cameras that stand in front of your place and try to like heckle and get people upset. I guess they did the same thing at your police department and all over town. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That was like, that was the main call that we had. It was like, they came out front, they set up their things. They stand right there. The cops came like four times. They tried to get the cops to do something so that then they can sue the police department with video. We have all the video online. It's, they're like, just, just super.
All right, that's unfortunate, but yeah, again, thank you for keeping the team active there, making sure that somebody's watching out.
Yeah, we have all our cameras and security guard armed 24 hours a day.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions, Mr. Hamada?
Uh, no.
All right, Mr. Dutton?
No questions.
All right, so now we're going to proceed if you have any questions on to the NC-3 Systems group, starting with Mr. Santanis.
Mr. May, ask me a question already previously.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez, have any questions on the NC-3 Systems group?
Mr. Mayor, I actually have one question for Joel, Mr. Hockman, and it kind of would apply to all of them.
Okay.
And I can apply the question here. Hey, Joel, just a quick question regarding the law enforcement calls for services. You know, in reading through them, it's difficult to tell whether it's, you know, staff calling and reporting, which I would think is a good thing for being vigilant, right, and being productive and helping us try to keep some of these issues down in that area. But then, you know, I see that sometimes it's unclear whether it's, you know, neighbors calling. That's one of the things I would want to avoid, right, where it's affecting neighbors. But if it's the actual permity being proactive, I think I would like to know that because I would welcome that kind of support to our public safety goals, right? Any clarification there, if in the future we could kind of provide a little bit more insight as to whether it's the permity making the call and calling it in or if it's, you know, a resident or bystander?
Right, we can try to be a little more complete on that in reporting in the future. Some of the call types would be inherently apparent, such as someone trying to pass a fake $100 bill would be taking place inside the store, but we can be, we can try to do a better job of identifying who is making the call. Not all the times is that known in the call log, but we can, when we do know it, we can certainly include that.
Thank you. That was it. That was my only statement. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And that concludes your questions. All right, Mr. Hamada, have any questions on the NC-3 Systems?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, one more on Medicine Woman, if I could.
Sure.
Thank you. I was going to ask this on, again, for all the dispensaries except one. I see that it was reported, but do you do delivery?
Currently, yes, we do delivery.
All right, do you incorporate those sales as part of your retail?
Correct.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Mr. Dutton? Any questions about NC-3? Okay. All right, Joint Forces LLC, Mr. Santanis, any questions on that applicant?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Seisk, do you know, do you recall, since they're giving up the manufacturing permit, do we know how much was the tax, so to speak, paid this year or last year? Do we have any, just kind of a ballpark?
So the fees were about $39,000, roughly, roughly $40,000. So they weren't producing a whole lot because they didn't have manufacturing up and running. So that's why they were looking to not renew manufacturing at this time, but expand the cultivation operations.
Okay, so is the applicant on the line?
Yes.
Is it Mr. Barrett or Miss, Miss Alexander?
We're both here, council member.
All right, th- thank you so much. Uh, since, since you're giving up the manufacturing permit, I'm just, just wanna know, uh, who will be doing the manufacturing for what you, what you, um, what you cultivate and, and raise from your production?
We can't, we can't hear you.
There's your answer.
Mr. Barrett, we're actually not able to hear you. I think it's your video connection or your audio. But Mr. Sanz Inez, I can, uh, hopefully help address this. Um, as, as staff has done some research on this as well, what we've looked at is what the state licenses allow for, um, in, in regards to, so they currently hold a state license for, you know, their cultivation operations, and what they, how they package their product that they have actually and they're selling in the store is actually allowed under their cultivation license, so they have their, and their dispensary licenses. So if you're, when you're getting into manufacturing, you have some of the extraction that goes on, and when you have products such as edibles that are being made, that's what triggers certain manufacturing permits with the state, but, um, in their case, for what they're actually doing in regards to, um, the way they're packaging for their, um, cannabis that they're cultivating, um, from my understanding, it's actually allowed under the state license that they have for cultivation.
That's the mi- my question is, um, i- it is a vertical integrated process because they cultivate, they manufacture, they distribute, and they dispense, so it's, it's a whole operation. They all, they have all the four permits. Of all the la- of all the permittees, I think they're the only ones who's got all the permits. So my question is, since they're giving up the manufacturing permit, who's gonna be doing the manufacturing process? Because that means, in my mind, uh, they, they will continue cultivation, they will harvest, and then send it to somewhere else, and then bring it back for the dispensary to be sold. So my question is, who's gonna be doing the manufacturing?
So they're the ones that are actually packaging their product, so they're doing that, uh, I believe, at their location, but that's under the cultivation license. So that's just packaging, I believe, the cannabis directly after they, you know, dry it and after it's ready to be packaged, they do that, but they're not actually manipulating or modifying the cannabis in any way which would trigger a manufacturing permit with the state. Their intention was to do that, uh, from my understanding, but, um, at this time, they weren't, it, it was too high carrying cost right now for manufacturing.
No, I think what he's asking is, they're gonna carry manufactured products, gummies, et cetera, in their store. Who's gonna manufacture it, and they, are they using their product to manufacture? That's the question. I don't think we know that. We'd have to have Jonathan answer.
Uh, council members, can you guys hear us now?
Yes.
Okay, so on the manufacturing, right now, we are not manufacturing any of our products whatsoever. We basically sell only flour and the trim that we had planned to manufacturing is actually more valuable just to sell it to another company to use for their brands, not ours.
Mr. Barrett, are you selling manufactured products in your store?
Yes, I am, but none of those are our brand or come from our dis- our, our grow.
Got it.
Okay, so, so basically, in layman's term, uh, what you're harvesting, are you just selling directly without any manufacturing process? Is that?
Correct.
Is my understanding correct?
You are correct, council member.
All right, all right, that explains that. Okay, my next question is, um, in, in terms of, um, code enforcement, I just wanna get to the heart of this. Um, in, in the staff report, there was a, um, an, a case was opened on April fifteen, twenty twenty-one regarding, uh, the odor complaint, and, um, the staff reports stated that the permittee has been working to resolve this issue. So can you give us an update in terms of where is this stand right now, what, what steps you have taken, and let's say, as of today, what's the situation in terms of the odor?
I'd love to. Okay, the original, uh, complaints that we ended up getting were basically, uh, a few months after we had opened, we had, uh, miscalculated on the filter filtration that we needed in the, in the facility. Uh, we've tripled the filters in there, and we are, we've sealed up all of the gaps we've gone through, the whole entire building, we've had specialists out here, and so basically, I think the only thing left for us to do, which I think the code enforcement and us all agree, is that our ACs that we thought would not leak out any smell are essentially giving a two to three percent air loss out of them of smell. So as of right now, our plans are into the city that we are going to replace all of the ACs in our rooms as we can. So the expansion on cultivation is more of adding a couple of rooms that we can get up so that we can shut down the existing rooms right now to make those changes. But those plans are in at the city, they've been at the city, and we have a couple of the new ACs already here, ready to go, and we plan on basically swapping out all of the ACs at the front of our building and in our grow rooms, one by one, and I think that will a hundred percent eliminate any of the remaining issues we have.
And what do you, what is your timeline in terms of completing all these, um, modifications?
So we've gotten the bids and we've done the times. I think each room will take us close to five or six weeks. We have to deconstruct all of the equipment in those rooms, get them out, get the old ACs taken out, put the new ACs in, run the new electrical for them, and that's basically our plan as of right now. We have two, the front of the, the first room is basically, the ACs are sitting there, ready for us, that once we approve the plan, I would assume that over the next three to four months, we will have all twelve other ACs swapped out.
Okay, uh, um, in addition to that, in the application, in the staff report, it mentions that, um, since you're giving, giving up the manufacturing permit, uh, you're planning on expanding the cultivation. So
Correct.
Tell us about your plan for expanding cultivation, because if you have issues now with your cultivation, uh, process, um, will it make, will it be worse once you expand? So tell us exactly what your plan to doing, and then, uh, tell us, um, how you mitigate those kind of issues in terms of the odor.
Mr. Barrett, I believe you're muted.
Rooms and have each room offline for five days.
Mr. Barrett, can you repeat, because we didn't get part of your testimony?
Okay. Can everybody hear me clearly?
Yeah, start with the, uh, response to my question about the expansion.
Yeah, so the expansion is honestly for the ACs that we need to remove. As we currently sit right now, it would take us five to six weeks of downtime in each one of those rooms to swap out those ACs. As of right now.
So you're not planning expanding the cultivation area?
No, we are. We're expanding the cultivation right now so that the rooms that we're getting ready to shut down to fix, we don't lose that income, 'cause of right now, we have to have a certain amount of cannabis come down monthly to be able to afford our bills. So we are not in a position right now to shut down multiple rooms at one time and not have any product come down for six, seven, eight weeks unless we can find a way of supplementing those rooms. So the new rooms are being built exactly the way they need to with the right ACs to start so that we can get those rooms up and running and shut down the other rooms to make the adjusted adjustments that we need to.
Okay, so let me just clarify this. So when, when the staff reported there's gonna be a plan for expansion, that includes the much change, swapping out the AC units, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, and have you gotten the, uh, the permit from the city?
Uh, not as right. Not as of right now. I think the city has till the thirteenth to get back to us on those plans. Those plans have been submitted that show the new rooms and the ACs that are being swapped out, so as soon as those plans get approved, the ACs that we are switching out are already on property, and we expect the first couple of ACs to move very fast.
So i- if the city gives you the permit by the, the thirteenth or the fourteenth, and you mentioned about five weeks, so you're looking at about somewhere towards the end of next month, correct?
Uh, the rest of the rooms, correct. The first room would probably be done by the end of this month, but we have four other rooms that will need to be switched out, and those will take a couple of months after those so that we can, uh, get everything in line.
Okay, um, i- in addition to this, um, is it appropriate for staff to talk about the, um, the illegal, illegal cultivation around the area? Uh, can, can, can someone give us an update on that, what was, what was found, um, to the extent we can share to the public, uh, because I believe that this could be part of that odor in the area, so if staff can report on that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll jump in here, and somebody can jump in if, if they wanna add anything. I'll give you the very thumbnail sketch, which is, as you are aware, and as one of the commentators started off with, at the beginning of this meeting, there were complaints with regard to one of the permittees, uh, close to Artesia, and we had problems for several months with regard to those types of complaints. We brought that permittee in for several discussions, including between myself and the city manager, uh, to discuss about what types of filtration could be put in in order to reduce the amount of smell that we believed was coming from that particular area. Uh, code enforcement, upon further review, discovered eventually that there was an illegal grow house that was quite close to the licensed grow house. Uh, we obtained an abatement warrant, and upon entering the facility, found about six thousand plants that were illegally being grown within this particular, uh, building. The, moving forward, the sheriff's department actually executed its own search warrant, removed the plants, uh, destroyed the plants, and we are currently in the process, code enforcement is currently in the process of discussing with the owner of removing all of the illegal tenant improvements that were done on the, on the site. We, we in the city attorney's office are also preparing a demand letter for back taxes, penalties, administrative citations, and abatement costs associated with getting rid of the problem, uh, but the problem, it appears, most of the smell complaints emanated from that illegal grow house, so that is now shut down. Uh, it's quite impressive in, in terms of, if you saw the inside of it, it was basically a, a building built inside of another building with ten different air conditioning units. Uh, what gave them away really, and what caused the smell problem, was a, one ventilation shaft that was built into the side of the building that was spewing out some of the smell. So it's, that's the very nutshell issue with that. Uh, I don't know if the sheriff's department is, is pursuing criminal charges or not. Our office is certainly following up from the civil side in order to collect everything that the city is owed, both in back taxes, penalties, interest, et cetera.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Berger. Uh, approximately, do you know, I have any idea how many, approximately how many plants were found and destroyed?
Six thousand.
Six thousand plants, okay, and in this case, will the owner of the property be liable for all those back taxes?
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good. Uh, that's all. Hi, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Sanchez, um, Joint Forces, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, questions and comments, um, on this. Uh, first of all, Mr. Barrett, thank you for being on the call, and then, uh, as well as Miss Alexandra. Um, I, you know, I, I, truth be told, I, um, I understand completely the, the concern of the smell, um, when this was, first came up and the issues were, uh, arose, you know, I personally, like many other of my colleagues, drove by that area constantly and, and then come to find out that the illegal operation was happening. Staff, do we have any idea how long that illegal operation was in play, by any chance?
The best I can tell you off the top of my head is, we believe it may have commenced in April, um, this year, which is when, um, as far as we can tell from the paperwork that we've gathered thus far, there was a lease that was issued by the property owner to the persons that were grow, actually doing the grow, so that's, that's the best estimate I can, I can tell you at the moment.
Okay, and, um, the reason why I kinda asked that is kinda wanna know the overlap as, as to, you know, when this operation was happening and causing some of the issues and the leakage and creating the smell that may have been, may or may not have been, um, part of Joint Forces. Um, Mr. Barrett, I, I do have a question, um, on your plan here to expand, 'cause I got concerns about the expansion of the cultivation. I'm trying to be, um, open-minded just because of the illegal operation that was happening here, but I do have concerns about your expansion from six thousand three hundred square feet to ten thousand. However, it does sound like your plan requires your expansion so that you're able to make corrections, additional corrections, and improve your facility and operation. Uh, at least that's what I got from the questions that were asked, answered to, uh, council member Sanz Inez. Can you, can you clarify that for me a little bit?
Yes, that is correct. Like I, uh, was saying before, it's, uh, to replace the ACs, we essentially have to deconstruct all the benches, take all the lights, all the fans, all the filters and everything out of the facility first, then we have to have the crane show up, take all the ACs out, have the new ACs put in, put up, new electrical run from that, and then we can put all the equipment back up, and the quickest timeline that we could see from that was probably six or seven weeks, and due to the nature of the business we're in right now, we need a certain amount of product to come down monthly so that we can pay our, uh, monthly bill. So the quickest way that we thought that that could happen, that we could do a room or two at a time, was to essentially add the last two rooms, which the last two rooms will be done correctly, the way they're supposed to, so that way we could move faster on the original floor that we think might be the last issues there. But we have literally gone from sealing cracks in doors to tripling filters, to changing our schedulings on the rooms, when we harvest, how we harvest, and I think we've come to the agreement, whether it was us or the illegal grow or whatever, if that, if we make this switch on the ACs, I almost guarantee that we should not have any smell coming from our side of the building.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, for that additional clarification. Um, s- so then I would say, um, you know, again, going back to the concern of the, of the, more so the neighbors, the residential neighborhood, I, I believe you're supported pretty well by your, um, surrounding immediate industrial neighbors. I've talked to a few of them, actually, um, but with the concerns of the residential area, um, i- i- in my opinion, i- if I were to try to move forward with the ex, you know, with voting to, uh, permit this, would you be opening, uh, what I mean by that is the expansion, would you be open to some kind of a, a three-month or six, because it sounds like you can get it done in two months, so would you be open to a three-month or six-month extension of your permit, and then reviewing it after the fact, making sure that there's no additional smells coming out, um, after the expansion has happened? Is that something?
Uh, yeah, yes, I mean, we're all for it. We, we know the people on, uh, Beverly that are, had the complaints. I mean, we go to all of the businesses on our street and constantly ask them if they're smelling anything or if they have any issues come to us, so just like you guys, it's very stressful for us to deal with the complaints on the smell, and I know how people feel, so we, just like you guys, wanna do whatever we need to do to kinda nip this in the butt so that we can just move forward and, uh, not have to, uh, deal with any more complaints or, uh, have any people upset with what we're doing here. We just wanna, uh, run a nice business, make money for the city, and we're willing to do whatever we need to do to do that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Barrett.
I also just wanted to note really quickly that, um, the expansion that we're doing on our current footprint is pre-approved, uh, on the original application. It's not additional grow space that we're asking for, just to finish out what was previously approved.
No, I understand that. Um, my concern either way would just be that there would be additional grow happening, and so, but, but if, again, if you're, you know, if you're willing to cooperate from a standpoint of, um, we have to be able to hold it all accountable, um, in my opinion, and so I think I have the answer that I need, so I just wanted to throw that out there and see what, um, you know, what your thoughts on that would be. Um, other than that, I think council member Inez ans- asked a lot of good questions that, uh, gave additional information, so, Mr. Mayor, that'll conclude my questions at this time for, for Joint Forces. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Hamada, any questions on Joint Forces?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first off, thank you, Mr. Barrett and Miss Alexander. Let me uh uh touch on your your distribution sales. It looks like for the next, you know, cou- number of years, it it stays flat. Can uh can you explain that, where I see others are projecting, you know, increases? Is it is it just that level of uh of um of what kind of endeavor that that you that you're not concentrating on? Or is it is it just something that just kind of comes along? It's nothing that you're putting more effort into that that component? Just trying to get a trying to get a handle on uh seeing uh that sales just stay flat for, you know, two, three years.
Yes, I think when we originally started in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, I think we thought there would be a bigger market to distribute other people's products. And as we found out, most m- most people usually have their own distro. So we weren't really able to find any people that wanted to attach to our distro. And as far as the sales number goes, I think it's just, we we didn't want to overpromise and underdeliver. So we figured that if we kept it kind of our baseline of what we're doing, that we were able to do additional sales next year and the year after that, it would be a bonus. But I didn't want to come up here and promise the moon and then next year come in and be like, well, we didn't do anywhere close to those sales. So I think all our numbers are very, you know, about spot on. I think they're a little underrepresented, but I think that was just what we decided to do so that we didn't come in here and oh, like we said, overpromise and underdeliver.
Okay, um maybe going back to the manufacturing permit, uh, you know, back in eighteen, it was very competitive then, and uh you had received one. So uh I I I know you responded to, I think, it earlier, but it didn't it didn't seem to really, you know, convince me. What what I mean, what are your reasons why you didn't want the manufacturing permit anymore?
Uh, right now, the very first crop that we had come down, we took our trim, we processed it, we had somebody process it for us, and our manufacturing took it back. That product is still sitting in my facility right now. We were not able to sell the concentrates the way that we thought because more and more labs have come online in the last few years. So we decided at this particular time, over the last three years, we put about half a million dollars into that license and have yet to make a dollar off that license. That as of right now, it was not right for our company to re-up on that particular license this year. Now, we do feel that, you know, as companies and that are possibly going under and more and more labs are becoming more available, that I think that market might come back. So we are not opposed to possibly reapplying for that license at a future date. But it was just more of a business sense now that we've put so much money into that. We we don't have half a million dollars to buy all the equipment, get the C one, D one, C one, D one two room, that we thought it was a little bit more affordable to possibly go through another company if we wanted to do that. But honestly, we're just not equipped right now and are not making the cells that we would like on the manufacturing to re-up on that. Like we said, it's a lot easier just to sell straight flower, and that's kind of been our MO as of right now.
Okay, understandable. Well, my colleagues asked the appropriate questions in regards to the odor, so I won't dwell on that. One question back to staff, uh, the cultivation uh tax rate is twenty dollars per square foot. Is that middle of the road, is it on the higher end, the lower end, based on past uh surveys and how we came up with that?
It's competitive.
Competitive?
Yeah.
All right, so it's in, it's there, all right. All right, um, all right, very good. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Mr. Dunton, have you any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna start off with with staff to my recollection on the illegal grow site. The front entrance, I'm gonna guess, is on Artesia Place, and it has a rear entrance, rear entrance from the illegal site on Beverly? Like a through lot, they call those through lots?
Yeah, the, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe the actual legal address is, I forget the exact number, but it's on Artesia, but
Artesia Place.
Yes, correct. So it is a, it's a weird looking lot with a strange looking property lines, but it's a big warehouse and it does have a, it looks like it's a surplus area right next to it.
You can you can actually drive in the Artesia Place side and drive out Beverly, right?
Correct, yeah.
And from
One zero zero two five, I think is the address.
Yeah, but we actually had trouble um pinning down the address, had to double check the assessor's records several times in order to ensure that we got it right on the abatement.
And then the big uh ventilation fan in the side of the building that's, from driving by, you can see that, and that's just blowing right in, right towards one of the residential houses, is that correct?
That's correct.
I just wanted to get it out there, how close this illegal site with the the plants or whatever
Originally, we actually thought it might Originally, we thought it might actually be the residence.
Really? And then uh, do we know an estimated time before when all those plants were removed from the building?
Yeah, it was a, I can't give you the exact date, but it was in October, so it
It was in October, okay.
It was all removed in October. That's when the both the search warrant and the abatement warrant were executed.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, that's all I have there. And now, uh, Mr. Barrett and Ms. Alexander? Are you there? Okay. This is not the first grow operation, from what I understand, from the past, when we got into cannabis here, that you had, you've been growing for several years or or kind of in the the business, is that correct?
That is correct, Councilmember.
And over the, say, the, you know, so you've, have you been growing for a decade?
Uh, correct, I'd say about twelve years.
Twelve years, okay. At your location here in Bellflower, you have a canopy uh grow area of, the canopy is how we tax it, like, say, is it six thousand feet in chains, I'm guessing, is that what I recall?
Correct, roughly.
So as you were, before you came to Bellflower, you were growing, were you involved with anything this big with six thousand feet or bigger?
Uh, no, that's what I was gonna say. This is substantially bigger than we were before. Uh, when we first started out and got down here and partnered up with some dispensaries, we would usually only have forty to eighty lights in 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 any particular warehouse, where this one has three hundred and twenty lights.
Gotcha.
So I think that was kind of the issue we had, you know, like when you're doing, as a business person, you understand, you know, everything makes sense on paper when you're doing the math. But once we got into the real world experiences and, you know, the rooms are twice as big as they were, you know, the new cannabis that everybody wants to grow is bigger, stinkier, you know, the whole whole nine yards. So it's kind of been a learning experience for us in that sense of just how to control all of this, making sure the doors are shut and all of that. So it's a little different when we only had forty lights in an actual warehouse. That wasn't really enough to make it smell like we've been dealing with.
The, as a plant matures, is there a certain time where a plant would smell more than other times as it's going through its grow process to the time it buds?
Yes, uh, every plant that starts out has no actual cannabis on it. It starts to grow about the third or fourth week, and usually it takes about nine to ten weeks of flowering. And the last three weeks of each room is when the buds are their biggest and they're smelliest. And usually that is your biggest red flag time is when you're close to harvesting.
Got it. Our city attorney said there's about six thousand plants in that uh illegal grow facility. And I'm trying to get plants versus canopy is um trying to get a relation to how big the illegal was compared to what you got going. Is a plant usually average a square foot or is there much more than that?
No, it's usually a plant a square foot. So our square footage directly correlates to the amount of plants. So we have around five thousand forty plants. So that other grow had about a thousand more plants than even we do in our facility.
Gotcha, so it was well comparable and a little bigger, got it, by about ten percent, okay. Okay, that's all I got on my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very
Thank you, uh, Mr. Barrett and uh Ms. Alexander.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunton.
Thank you, Mr. Dunton. That's Mayor Coops, and I've got a couple of questions for you. The uh cultivation areas that you had previous to coming to Bellflower, where was that located? Was out in the rural area or was it in a cosmopolitan area like this?
No, it was actually in uh industrial areas that were nowhere close to residential. I'd say most of the grows that are in Los Angeles are usually down in the east LA uh industrial area.
So you probably had to put on your best operation to be in a area like you are now, even more so than when previous operation.
Yes, you're correct, sir.
You were probably as surprised to find out that we had the illegal operation across the street from you as we were. Do you believe, or I I'm sure if you would have known it was there, you would have said, hey, what's going on here? But do you believe that your operation has contributed to the odor? Or would you put most of the blame on the guy that's now out?
Uh, I'd have to be honest and say that I'm sure a few of those calls were us in the beginning. Uh, but, you know, there were a lot of times that we would smell it or we'd have code enforcement show up, and we honestly wouldn't have any of our rooms in flowering. So it used to drive us crazy when sometimes we'd get calls about complaints or something. Did you do something over the weekend? And I'd go in my rooms and we don't even have flowering plants in those rooms to smell.
We invited code enforcement inside the building, and they can attest to that inside the building, you couldn't get the smells that as concentrated as you would get outside of the building itself.
No, I think it was a big relief to know that there was another origin for this odor. But I, subsequent, we were just talking about when they were shut down, which is in October. We have had a couple of complaints on your operation subsequent to when they closed, correct? We can't blame them anymore, is what I'm trying to say.
You are correct. Uh, I think we found out there were a bunch of complaints that came in Monday, which we basically have video footage. That was the exact same day that they were cleaning out the whole entire illegal grow. We probably saw six or seven trucks bringing out ACs, lights, benches. And so what we were trying to let everybody know is that when you're growing cannabis and that smell, it permeates through your ACs and all of your equipment, that stuff usually has a lingering smell. Uh, but if there were any issues since then, I would take one hundred percent responsibility for that. And the plans that we have in effect to to change any of those issues are in place right now. They're just not things that we can do in a couple of days span. We've got to go through the architect, the mechanical, we got to submit plans. But we are fully determined to change anything and everything we need to do until we have no complaints from anybody or anything.
Kind of revisit what you uh provided earlier on the two additional areas for growing. And uh you have the new air conditioning equipment for the new grow rooms. And are you going to retrofit or replace the air conditioners that are on your current growing areas?
Yes, we are. We have the new uh ACs for the two rooms, and we have three new, three of the new ACs to replace to the front of our building to start immediately. And then as those next rooms come down and we can get in there to take all the equipment and get all that done, that is basically our process to just keep replacing them one by one until they're all replaced.
And how many units is there total when you've included the new ones and exchanged the old ones?
How many? We have twelve of our old units, which are basically packaged units, which basically take the air from the room up into the top of the AC and then put it back. We are planning to replace one of the the front, like I said, and we would only have four other rooms that we would need to swap out after that.
So when it's all said and done, all twelve rooms will have new equipment?
Correct.
And you think that will, now you mentioned earlier, uh, five week constructions. What was that about? Is that to get the new rooms online or to uh start replacing the old rooms' equipment?
It was more of along the lines of replacing the equipment because the ACs are sit on the roof and we have a lot of other equipment that is underneath those, the lights, the fans, the DEUs, all the Unistrut that hangs that. We have rolling benches that need to be deconstructed to take out so that we can have the, all the ductwork removed, all the air handler. Then we need to put the new ACs in, run all the ductwork for that. We need to run a little bit more electric because with the mini splits, we're gonna go smaller mini splits and more of them, so we'll have to run new electric. So the whole process is in place, it's just to speed it up. We thought if we could add these back two rooms the right way they are, then we can start shutting down rooms faster and making those switches quickerier.
Makes sense. But I think we're all relieved to know that your plan is to exchange all twelve units so that they're all as best as they can be, uh, to try and get ahead of the concerns you had for the uh the odor. Have you, I know you're on a schedule, as all of our applicants are, that if you do put out an order that you could be subjected to a fine?
Yes.
Have you paid any of our fines yet?
Yes.
We had gotten our first fine, I think, in October, and we have paid that first fine.
Okay, so at this point, you've paid one fine, correct?
Correct.
But you've gotten plenty of warnings that lead to a fine if you don't get a obeyance, correct?
Most definitely, we see code enforcement on a regular basis.
All right.
Like
Put them on your Christmas card list.
I was gonna say, we know all the city people extremely well over the last five or six months, but we're always helpful to do whatever we can. And I think we've shown them that we plan on being here a very long time. So we want to make sure these corrections get made in a timely fashion so that we do not have to have these conversations.
No, and and I'll be honest with you, my perception is you're as disappointed as we are when you have a spillage like you have had. And uh I I understand that, and you've been very conscientious to try to correct the problem. All right, so uh we're gonna conclude our questions on joint forces, and we're gonna move on to uh Dynasty Alliance Grow Incorporated. Mr. Santi Santianez, you can lead the questions if you'd like.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first question to staff about um BBNY. And the staff report says that there's uh ten thousand one eighty-one square feet, and um only four thousand nine nine, nine hundred ninety-two are being currently used. So were they permitted for ten thousand or were they permitted for four thousand nine hundred square feet?
They were permitted for the uh ten thousand amount, I believe. This was just because they were outfitting the second floor of the building for additional grow rooms, and they've been um actually working on that. So they're they're getting a couple more rooms online, so that would increase the square footage and then also the projected revenue to the city.
My recollection is we taxed them based on permitted square uh square feet, not My recollection is we taxed them based on permitted square, square feet, not what they're being planted. So whether this plant or not, as long as it's permitted, we don't care. As long as it's permitted, they pay.
Correct, they're paying full freight going forward.
I'm kind of concerned about this calculation because it's only based on five, less than five thousand. So can, can, can you clarify that?
They were, we allowed them to pay the square footage, the half rate that they paid while they were building up the second floor, but going forwards, my understanding, they're going to pay the full rate on the ten thousand square feet.
But they, when were they permitted for the whole area, for the ten thousand square feet?
Back originally, what was, when we permitted them all, I don't remember when that was.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
So we didn't collect that balance, so to speak?
Yeah, we are going to collect the balance going forward, yeah.
Okay. Um, is Ms. Kristina on, on the line?
Yes, I am, sir.
Hi, Bernice, how are you?
Good, how about yourself, sir?
Very good. First question to you is, who, who is Johann Leon?
Johann Leon is my partner at Premier Fleet that we started the project and the construction for the, for the agriculture here at eighty-eight thirty-two Ramona Street. And he's pretty much been my, um, everything, like he's been to the city with me, the construction of the building, my guidance, everything. Um, that's, that's Mr. Johann. So him and I have been the ones putting the project, getting loans, moving forward, trying to survive. It's been always Mr. Johann Leon and myself.
So it seems, it seems like based on your description, he's a key personnel of these operations, correct?
Correct, sir.
So has, has he been fingerprinted, has been submitted?
No, we, we, we were to, uh, it's pretty much, it was, uh, we were practically married, so we owned Premier Fleet Maintenance and from Premier Fleet Maintenance, that's how we began the cultivation. Uh, most of the funding came from Premier Fleet Maintenance together. So both businesses have been both of us together.
But, but on the, from a procedural standpoint, he has not been vetted because according to our resolutions here, for cannabis, any key personnel, any owner, needs to be vetted by the city.
But he's not the owner, sir. I'm the one that take, have been taking the project.
Hold on, let me, I didn't mean to cut you off. Ownership means actual ownership or being a key personnel. So based on your description of what he does, it seems like, it looks to me that he is a key personnel who should have been vetted by the city.
Okay, sir, I understand. But he has not have been fingerprinted because the, um, it was never in agreement that he was an owner. He was my husband and we did the project together as husband and wife. But, um, the, once we opened up the doors, he hasn't been part of the project as, on the cultivation side of it.
Yeah, I understand.
I have been by myself.
I understand, but again, based on the, based on our cannabis regulations, ownership is either one of the following, a person with aggregate ownership interest of twenty-five percent or more, or an individual who will be participating in the direction, control or management of a permatee. So based on your initial description, he is to me, a, an owner of the business. So, uh, Steph, he needs to be, he needs to be vetted.
Oh. Miss, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Mr. Sunny, um, he began with the construction, but the whole management and everything, I've been doing it by myself. He hasn't been part of the cultivation. The only thing that he helped me out along with my company with his Premier Fleet was the construction of the building. But moving forward after, after the construction that we both pretty much were doing it, he has not been part of the cultivation facility. I have been managing, running it, cultivating, you name it, I've, I've been doing everything.
Okay, but let me just.
Along with a couple of employees.
Let me just wait there, I don't want to be argumentative here because I asked you earlier what he does for the company and you gave me a long list of things that he does, he does. So that's to me is present.
Okay, sir, I understand.
Earlier. So because I purpose my question based on what he does.
Okay.
So how do we fix this, Steph?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, based upon Resolution Number twenty-one zero eight, what you've identified is entirely correct, which is ownership includes an individual who will be participating in the direction, control or management of a permatee. My recommendation is until that individual, if that individual is still part of the overall ownership of this particular permatee, that the matter be postponed until the individual can be thoroughly vetted.
All right. Ms. Kristina, did you, did you hear what the city attorney said?
I understand, sir, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, next question to you is, I noticed that there was a name change to, from BBNY to Dynasty Alliance Grow.
Correct, sir.
When did this change happen?
Last year, in two thousand and twenty.
Two thousand and twenty? Did, did I miss that last year?
Hold on, sir, hold on.
Application?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the application came in in August of this year and was approved about three months ago by, by the city.
Ah, okay, so it was approved, all right, very good. So it, it wasn't last year?
No, sir, this year.
All right, very good. And then, Ms. Kristina, on your application packet, you also mentioned that there were some issues with the state cannabis license?
There's no issues, sir. They're just taking a little bit longer due to the, the, the departments, there used to be three departments, now it became one department, which is a DCC, and they really are having difficulties on proceeding with the applications, but it's moving forward. We had an issue, they tried to blame the city that the reason it wasn't moving along, but we clarified that and now it has moved forward.
So for clarification, I received an inquiry last week from the Department of Cannabis requesting information on Ms. Kristina's application. And I indicated last week, the day after I received the email, that they were currently in compliance with city regulations. So I think they're working on it, it should come forward pretty quickly at this point.
Okay, so in no time, they should get the, the renewal permit from the state. Okay. Very good. Do we need to condition that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is you have two additional requests on, if you do grant the permit today would be to request Mr. Leon to, under your live scan, fingerprint clearance and to ensure that they have a state cannabis permit prior to the operation of this in the near, when it goes forward.
Okay, very good. That concludes my question, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santianes. Mr. Victor Sanchez.
Uh, no questions, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Kristina, um, you, you know, heard the application of the last grower. When you grow and, and at the appropriate times and the budding and, do you ever smell odors in, in your area?
No, sir, we have can filters around the, the, um, the facility that helps with the odor. But since we have steel doors on every single room, there, they have gaskets, we put special gaskets around the, the doors along with the entry doors, it actually helps a lot. I have not received any complaints of odor.
All right, okay, thank you very much for that comment. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada, Mr. Dutton.
Yeah, on, uh, the, one question on, I recall the staff going through the name change from BBNY to Dynasty Alliance Grow. None of the corp, corporation documents got changed or ownership changed, everything's the same?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for, I just actually forwarded and so just for purposes of transparency, we did receive, or the city council received rather, an email from the attorney representing Renee Bird Oriana.
Brianna?
Yes. Asserting that the name change was improper and encouraging the city council to postpone, well, to deny the renewal application. I have responded to that email encouraging him to participate in this public hearing as it's ongoing and absent the city council being, or the city being served with a court order preventing it from moving forward, that there was no legal basis for the city council not to move forward. I also asked him to respond to myself rather than to the city council on the matter since he is an attorney and he's threatening litigation. In any event, to answer your question, we did receive an application that is dated, I just have, oh, here it is, it's actually was signed on the eighteenth of July of this year, was considered by the city in August of this year. It contains all the corporate documents for the new entity, asserts that the, it was a conversion from BBNY to this new entity and the city did approve the modification based upon the assertions made in the application. It was vetted by staff in terms of both the articles of incorporation. There is also a provisional license that's included with this from the state to confirm that indeed the new entity would be able to operate under their state license. And so this was, this application was thoroughly vetted. To answer your question, we do have the corporate records from the new company, which includes the individuals that are currently providing testimony with regard to the matter. It does not include anybody else on those corporate documents.
Okay, thank you. That was all my questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Uh, this is the mayor asking the question, who actually owns the building in which you operate your facility?
Berenice Kristina, myself, sir.
Okay. So are you a married couple or am I asking the wrong question? I know you said you were very close. I don't want to break the law by asking if you're married or not, but I get the impression you may be.
No, sir.
All right. How many plants do you currently have that you're cultivating in your operation?
Uh, right now, we're about to launch the remaining rooms, uh, like it was stated prior, so it's going to be about fifteen hundred plants at one point.
So if I were to come to your facility today, how many plants would I see being grown?
About eight hundred.
Okay. And so when you're in, what would one level, I know you're shooting for a second level, your ground level operation, when it's working at maximum capacity, how many plants will that have in it?
Uh, per level?
Yeah, at ground level, which I believe you're working at now, if you had that full of plants, how many plants would that be?
Full of plants, it would be about eight hundred, sir.
You have eight hundred plants in five thousand square feet?
Yes, because we basically open up the plants to grow like a tree. Instead of going up, we make them expand to the sides. So the less plants, it's kind of like you have to work on a, on a quantity and I've been doing it for a couple of years now. So the, the, I found out that the less plants you have, at a certain point, you could work with them and make them grow to the sides instead of up and start competing amongst each, like amongst each other. So we're, we came with a number that it, the rooms are doing much better.
Okay. Well, as you know, we're learning as we go here as to how many plants go in a square foot. We had one illegal grower that had about five thousand, six thousand, and we have a current operator. So we're, we're all learning here. So would I expect that on your second level, you'll have eight hundred plants, so it's the same footprint?
Correct, sir.
Okay. All right, well, that is all my questions on this item, so now we're going to go over to EEL Holdings and we'll begin with Mr. Santianes.
Mr. Mayor, I have no questions for EEL, thank you.
All right, Mr. Victor Sanchez.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have no questions here.
All right, Mr. Hamada.
Uh, yes, just a quick one for Mr. Lewis. On your projected sales between twenty-three and twenty-four, you stay flat, so just any, any thoughts or comments there?
Yeah, I got no video, could you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's probably better you don't want to see my fat face, but I'm blocked on the, on the video, if they're here, they can, now they go. Um, yeah, so, you know, look, we're, you know, we're always trying to, you know, do better. I think at this point, you know, we've kind of flattened, there's, there's a couple of large issues that I think will determine, that are external, you know, the ultimate, you know, possibilities that we can do there. I do think there's some tax reform afoot at the state is three quarters of the market still remains illegal because we're overtaxed. I'm a little more sympathetic to the cities on the issue, the big taxes are at the state. I think if they reform that, you know, substantially and remove the excise from twenty-seven to five, we could as much as double sales. Um, I also think that what's eventually going to start happening is more cities will open, you know, like, you know, we'll see, who knows, Lakewood, Downey, you know, some of these other areas, so that will be kind of the, the, the other part of it. But the, the illicit market has actually gotten stronger, not weaker. There's kind of an extinction event going on, and you know, again, I, I won't get into it regarding the city, but we hope there is some major reforms in the state. So again, we didn't want to overpromise. Um, I will throw in this, as far as a non-retail issue, that's obviously our main driver of income. We are starting to work with some vendors so they can bypass their distribution companies, we can get cheaper cost of goods and we'll, you know, over time, we'll probably utilize that distribution more. We've been having conversations with, as our footprint gets bigger, it's easier for people just to drop their, and Bellflower, I know that won't be a huge driver of revenue for the city, but I suspect those numbers will, will go up. You know, we always strive to improve. Uh, again, if the state would reform tax policy substantially, they don't need the money, they have a thirty-one billion dollar surplus and they only get a billion from us, I do think sales would double overnight and law enforcement wouldn't have to bust the, uh, or you saw there, that's a very long-winded name. You know, I think we'll be right in this one where we are now, but I suspect there will be tax reform in the state, you know, one day.
Okay, thank you for those thoughts, Mr. Lewis. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamada, Mr. Dutton.
I'm good with Mr. Lewis, no questions.
All right, Mr. Lewis, we're going to let you off the hook. Okay, at this point, we will open up for questions from the public. And if you, when you address us, please identify if you're talking about a particular establishment or if the, you are wanting to question us on about the entire five applicants here. So Madam City Clerk, please open it up for a public comment.
Mayor, I have a raised hand for Renee Oriana. Please allow me to place a timer on this hearing and then you may begin. Okay, you may begin.
All right, hello, mayors, councilmembers, staff. Uh, my name is Renee Oriana, I originally started with BBY at eighty-three-two Ramona Street along with Ms. Bernice Kristina. And a little bit of differences and now I've noticed as of yesterday that it has changed to Dynasty Alliance Grow. And being one, what concerns me is being one of the license holders is that I wasn't contacted either by my business partner, anyone from the city as far as the move to change the name and ownership. And that's a bit of a concern that I had to do my own digging at the eleventh hour to come up with this information.
All right, so you're the originator of the email that we received at this morning at ten oh six?
Correct.
Are you listed on the applicant as one of those participants?
On the Dynasty, no, but on the original BBY, yes.
All right, so I'm going to turn that over to staff, maybe the city attorney would have an answer as to why they have some inconsistencies.
I think he already answered it.
All right.
We took the application under penalty of perjury from the applicant, we processed it accordingly. This is completely a civil matter between Mr. Oriana and the, the owner of Ms. Bernice Kristina.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that part. My question is, is if that's, if they're able to just change the name without noticing a partner, would that allow me to do the same thing?
My answer is the same.
Yeah, that's a civil matter. We're acting upon what information we believe to be true and correct. It has to be determined whether or not that is the case, but that is not under our purview today.
All right, perfect.
Thank you for your testimony, moving on to the next applicant.
Mayor, I have a raised hand for Dee. Please restate your name for the record and then you may begin.
Hi, this is Dee Bennett. My first name is actually Doreen. Um, yeah, I was addressing the, primarily the Green Wolf operation. I know I've smelled stuff around town elsewhere, but I don't know where it's coming from. Green Wolf in particular, the smell's been as recent as yesterday. The wind changes all the time, so you know, it The wind changes all the time, so, y- you know, depending on the direction of the wind, we get wafts and pockets of it. Not as strong as it was originally. This stuff started in February. It was so powerful that standing in my driveway, I could swear my next door neighbor was smoking right next to me. Um, but it took me two months till I figured out exactly where it was coming from, cause I called the AQMD and, I mean, you can't just tell him you smell something somewhere. So anyway, so that's why this call wasn't registered until April. The illegal grow started after that. As far as the biggest, smelliest plants, all plants smell. Anytime those plants move, it's gonna smell. Any of you who have lavender in your, or rosemary even, in your yard, you'll know that. If a cat brushes by it, you're gonna smell it. So the cultivation and manufacturing both are gonna emit some kinda smell. These people have been in operation for twelve years. Granted, maybe not as large, but they should've had more experience or sought out more knowledge on how to handle this in order to stand good gracious with everybody around here. There's also no scientific equipment, as far as I've been told, to detect the amount of scent in the air. So, I mean, that's kind of a problem also. So if they get granted this permit to continue on with stuff that's gonna smell and somehow get out, I think they should have a probationary period where someone's continually monitoring them. As far as the other operations, I think all the operations should be monitored. The fact that you're not getting more complaints about smell in those other areas might be just cause people are afraid to call. I don't know. I, I mean, the residents aren't responsible for, for trying to make the businesses successful. Um, I understand they've, I've been under a lot of stress. They've done a lot of work on this, but it's just not enough. The smell wasn't supposed to be here to begin with. So the fact that it's almost a year later is, is really unfortunate. And that search, the, uh, search warrant was conducted on Veterans Day. I was there and I spoke to the detective.
Does that conclude your testimony?
I guess. I'm just reading notes I jotted down and, um, it, it's just really, i- it's upsetting you have to go through this for this length of time. Okay, I appreciate your time and I'm glad you called an extra meeting on this.
All right. Well, thank you for your testimony.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, I see no further raised hands at this time.
Thank you very much. So, um, any other questions of staff before we move forward? Well, we pretty well have vetted them out, haven't we? I'm surprised we didn't have more to, public testimony, but apparently we, uh, they heard what we were talking about and had their questions answered.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, if I may, just circle back to one of the earlier questions at the outset of the public hearing with regard to certifying on ownership. I did provide you with, uh, language that I typed up in response to that query. Uh, there is a slight modification. Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez pointed out that, uh, we should note that, that if there's a modification for ownership, that would be acceptable. So, uh, I'll just read it for purposes of, of public clarification. It would read as follows, which would be part of a, a motion if the council desires. It would read as follows, "The city manager is authorized to amend administrative policy and procedure number one dated March fourteenth, twenty-eighteen, and entitled activation of cannabis business permits and conditional use permits for cannabis business as follows. Add a new provision under section five, that's a Roman numeral five, entitled methodology, to read as follows. Number four, provide a certification in a form approved by the city attorney, signed under penalty of perjury in accordance with the laws of the state of California, confirming that there is no change in ownership between an originally issued CBP and a renewed CBP unless approved by the city council via modification in accordance with the cannabis regulations." Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of what, uh, has been suggested and amended by Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez? All right, so.
You mind if, do, you mind if I make one quick, uh, kinda request? Uh, sorry to barge in. Um, and I've asked about this before and if it's, if it's not something we can do, it's not something we can do. What would really help us for accounting purposes? And there's really complicated tax issues, uh, surrounding cannabis.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we have no idea who's speaking.
Yeah, it's Elliot.
The mayor does not recognize them as for speaking purposes.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
All right, uh, so, uh, we're gonna provide, uh, we get public testimony already, so that's over. Even though it's not a public hearing, it's over. Uh, I'm looking for a motion or any questions if you wanna move forward on, I think we're gonna do these all at once, is, are we gonna do them individually?
We can do them all.
Let's do them all at once.
Well, I heard some comments about a provisional permit, at least from one of the council members about, for one of the candidates. So I think if that's the direction you wanna go, we should probably pull that one out and then handle the other three together.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And, and Mr. Mayor, also, there's a, there's gonna be a conditional also for BB, uh, for Dynasty about the state license and the ownership.
Same comment. It's, it's, those should be both, if that's the direction you wanna go.
Okay. Does anybody wanna make a motion for these?
Do we wanna make a motion and?
Do you wanna include?
Four, uh, one and one? There's six, you know, there's.
Let me, let me see. So, let's just take them.
Three, one and one?
Let's just take them one by one. I mean, might as well just do that because there's at least two of them are gonna have some modifications.
Two of them got modifications, yeah.
So just start in order of the presentation and make your motion accordingly on each of those.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the Medicine Woman Group.
I'll second that motion. W- with the, um, addition for number four.
Oh, the, the city attorney's definition, which is, uh, provide certification form.
Okay.
In form, uh, form of approval. Yes, that'll be my motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanzinez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Do we have a motion for NC Three Systems?
So I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez, supported by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Please poll the commission.
With number four?
With number four.
Inclusive of number four, as amended.
Okay.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanzinez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Item, Joint Forces LLC.
I'll make a motion to, uh, uh, let's do, I'm gonna make a motion to approve EEL Holdings with, uh, inclusion of number four to make it a little cleaner.
All right, so we're gonna skip down to, uh, EEL Holdings?
Yes.
And we have a motion by Councilmember, I know, uh, Mayor Protem Dutton. Any support?
Second.
All right. Supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanzinez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, let's go back to Joint Forces LLC. Any comment on that?
My comment I heard during discussion that we wanted a six, six-month timeline?
Yes, correct.
All right, so.
We wanna, we wanna add that, um, timeline of, of, uh, odor mitigation with the new ACs is.
So, uh, sure, you're gonna give them six months to get their new installation of equipment and then we're gonna evaluate at that point to extend their contract or? Do you wanna give them a six-month permit, not a year?
Oh, we'll get, we'll get the renewal now with the six-month thing and that, that can kick them out. That's.
All right, so it's still a one-year contract. We're gonna reevaluate in six months, see how they're progressing. Is that right?
That's what I would recommend if.
All right, so that's the motion. Does anyone who would support that?
I'm, I'm okay with that as long as there's consistent monitoring throughout and if at the six-month timeframe, it's just, you know, they haven't gotten control over it, then if we can pull a permit then, then I'm okay with that.
Yeah, we'll continue to monitor. I mean, I, I heard, we heard from Mr. Barrett that he expects it to take a couple of months to put the air conditioning. It's, we'll monitor it and we'll give him a couple of months, see if it all works out.
Right. And my understanding would be that he, he's got two months of construction, give or take. And then there'd be about three months of full operation with the new system intact. And at that point in time, that should be ample time to make a decision.
So my s- follow-up question is what I had is waiting for this to come back. It's kinda why I was interjecting. So he has plans and plan check as from what we've understood from staff.
Do next Monday, I think.
There's a, there's a process that's going on. There's a construction process. Do we want to waive any fines for the six months process because if he's got plans and plan check, is it his fault? I'm just throwing it on the table.
Well, so what I'd recommend is that, um, the operations are what they are. Um, a lot of it is due diligence. We fined him actually, again, two days ago. We expect him to do that. So the only, as far as where we find him, I don't wanna waive those fines. Um, they've been levied. They should've been levied.
During the construction, if we got plans and plan check, we're not being able to let them to turn them loose.
But the question is, do you wanna go forward? If you want us just to monitor and observe and then not fine, that's fine, but what we've done.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, okay, that's.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I can, if I can just jump in, because when I asked the question earlier, they said five weeks to finish the construction. And right now, the permit's in, with the planning department and they should hear from them by the thirteenth?
They'll get their initial comments back by the thirteenth. The question is, if there's, if there's no corrections.
My suggestion is to give them until the end of January. After that, code enforcement should come in and if there's any complaint, we should assess the penalties.
Oh, no, it's five weeks per room. He's gotta do this several times.
No, I think he's gonna be finished in five weeks, all of them. That was my, my understanding.
That ain't what I heard.
That's, ask the que, I'm sure they're still on the line.
Yeah.
So what's your timeframe on improvements?
Uh, I think on all of the rooms, it would probably take us three to four months. Like Councilmember Dutton said, it is a five to six-week process per room and we currently have five rooms.
He, he, you know, I didn't wanna interject, as he's, he's got different rooms and rooms and he grows a little here, then this one is a different maturity, different maturity. He has, what he said, he has to close out a room, finishes one, he's doing a room that he's not growing in first. Once that gets up, he can re, he'll, you know, harvest a room, empty it, don't plant, plant in a new room and then it's, it's a process that he has to do. That's what I heard.
Yeah, my understanding though is, you know, if he does that, then he should not let the odor out while he's doing the construction. So if he's adding, let's say, room number seven, he should not start number eight unless he really can, can control number six and number seven.
Well, all these rooms are separate.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah.
So, uh, to me, what's the point of adding a new room if he cannot control the previous room in terms of the emission of odor?
I think he stated during, for financial reasons, it makes sense to do this expansion on the first room, get that going and then he can close down another room.
Right.
Get that going. And then when that's going, plant that one, close down another room and go on like dominoes.
Yeah, I, I, I get that, but what I'm get, but what I'm getting at is, I, I think giving him a very long time to finish this, I think that there's gonna be more complaints if he doesn't control it.
Well, actually, as, after the first time, it should be getting better. It should be tapering off as, as he goes.
Exactly. So, so my, my, my timeline is based on the permitting process from the city and give him, give him about five weeks to get it finished. And then he should not be opening the next, the next room until he finished the previous room.
No, that's, yeah, he's gonna finish one and plant it and then close down a room.
Right. So if he does properly, then there shouldn't be no emission of odor.
But he has other, he may have four or five other rooms growing in the old air conditioning system. I mean, as a business owner as I am, businesses have, have a tough enough time as it is. You need to think as a businessman and let a guy do his business. He says he's gonna fix it. He's come a long way at this point. As a business aspect of it, you need to let people do their business.
I do. And I, 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 I get that part. My question is the expansion part at the very end, because if he do, if he.
Well, the expansion is.
Let, let me finish. If he can replace, let's say if he's got six rooms, he takes care of that within five weeks or so. Okay? So why would he start with the seven and eight if he cannot control one to six?
The expansion part is the same footprint. It's a two-story thing. It's, it's, it's building above. Um, we can ask the applicant, but from what my inspections over there, and I've been over there a lot, the inspection process is you're having a two-story facility in the building and he's actually building out the same footprint. Staff would know that. Is that correct?
I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's, that's what I've envisioned is over there for tours. I've been over there for several times through this whole proj- process.
They're separate rooms.
Yeah, but the expansion is when he does a room and has to upgrade it, that's the time. He can't just build a, a, a second floor in those rooms while there's growing operations down below. Yeah.
If I may add, so what I understood from it is that he, and this was the part where he said, he's gotta start, he's gotta build the, he's gonna build the next room, number seven or whatever, let's just name it number seven, to code, to this new standard. And then he'll close down one room and then fix that and, but open up the new room and start growing in the seventh room. So he's gonna add three more for that, whatever, let's just say, let's, he's gonna add two more. He's gonna close one down, uh, correct it and then reopen that back up. That's what I'm understanding. Is that correct, staff? I mean.
Let Mr. Barrett answer that. He'd do it better.
Uh, council members, correct. The, uh, two rooms that were being added are essentially how I'm gonna cover the losses of the rooms while I shut them down. Unfortunately, in this climate of cannabis, selling the pounds are really hard, so I can't really afford to shut my whole entire operation down for multiple months with no income. The quicker way for me to do that was to add the two back rooms correctly so that those two rooms can re- replace the two rooms that I'm gonna shut down to fix. And so that was kind of the thinking that I could supplement what I was going to lose out of the business by the new room so that I had the proper time and to speed up that process of changing out the old rooms.
So, Mr. Ver, Ver, let me just clarify something. What you're saying now is initially, it's not really an expansion. You're just replacing what you have to make room for the change over in the air conditioning unit. So, in a layman's term, for example, if you have six rooms right now, so you, you will inactivate rooms one and two and open up seven and eight. So you're not adding initially any rooms.
Oh, six months from now, ain't it?
Yeah, no, but initially.
Initially, it's the same.
He's not adding. He's just.
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right, I got it now. Because he's just replacing it, because initially, my thought was he was expanding right away at the same time as he was replacing the air conditioning. Okay, so thanks for the clarification.
I think one of the discussions we're having here, while you're doing your construction and you're emptying out your existing rooms that are gonna be improved, will you be able to s- control the odor out of those rooms as they're dismantled?
Yes, because there will be no plants in those rooms to have any smells.
All right, so even though you're putting new air conditioning in there and the doors gotta be open for construction to, people to come and go, you're not gonna be putting out any odors. Does that sound right?
That is correct.
And that was our concern, because I, I think Mr. Dutton, as an operator and I am too, how do you do construction and still operate your business without contamination in the neighborhood?
Right.
Does that sound right?
That's right.
So does that help understand better what we're looking for? Is there some sort of a, an agreement here between Mr. Dutton and Mr. Sanzinez as to what we can do in terms of time?
Can I ask Jonathan?
Sure, go right ahead.
Hey, Jonathan, is five weeks enough to do the whole thing?
No, I mean, I have, as of right now, four or five of my rooms probably have six or seven weeks left. And just, you know, that's a lot of work. You're talking about taking down five, six rooms, all the equipment, all the ACs, putting all the new ACs back up. Plus, I still have to go through planning on all of those AC upgrades.
So you to, give us a number and we'll work with it.
You need six months or less?
I, I, I think we're probably looking at in between the three and six months. I think six months is probably a little long. Three months, a little short. So I think if we could get somewhere in that five, four to five-month range. Because like he said, I just can't physically afford to take down all five rooms. And then if each five rooms takes five to six weeks to adjust and get back up, you know, the, just not even the planning department, it's gonna take me three months just to do the normal takedown, put up.
Jonathan, or, or, Mr. Barrett, are you taking into account as a timeline with construction nowadays? With contractors not showing up, equipment not being available and all the unknowns in construction? Every business is having them.
To be honest, no. I basically just, I, I, I'm gonna move as fast as I can. I just don't know the time on that. We, like I said, the plans are in. We're doing this. It's just, how can I make it work and still be able to somewhat do business to pay my bills? It's just, how can I make it work and still be able to somewhat do business to pay my bills?
You have the option, are we considering in six months if you want to do a six-month permit and then go from there if he struggles?
We don't want to give him three months and have to come back.
Yeah, I mean, you don't, it'd be short. It'd have to be six months.
Everybody knows the world we live in now, getting stuff done.
Yeah, I think a six-month provisional is fair to get him up and running. Then if, if there's some complications, he can come and speak to that in six months.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask another question to, for the benefit of our residents here? Uh, Mr. Barrett, so just in terms of the process, so let's say you take out, uh, room number one and two. You decommission those two and then you open, oh, first of all, you're going to open up seven and eight and then decommission one and two. So in the meantime, there's a possibility that three, four, five and six, uh, will not, will emit odors. Is that, is that true?
Uh, it, it could very well. I mean, there's other, you know, we can, obviously, I think it's, uh, when you factor in the smelling so bad, I think it comes from all of the ACs. But unfortunately, you know, I've put as many filters and has done as much as I can in there. We've basically gotten to the last part where the ACs are those fix. And those are the fixes I'm trying to do now. Uh, we have other, you know, it's like I've pretty much exhausted all the measures. I've had all the specialists in, I've had everybody in. I think the code enforcement, let's all agree, these are obviously a couple of AC issues. Uh, there's one other thing that we have yet to try, which is basically they put scented fragrances that blow out of the AC. That's the next thing that we are going to, kind of try. But I think as, as far as shutting down a room or two at a time, that basically eliminates almost forty percent of the smells that would be coming. So there could be a smell or two, you know, to be honest, you know, during that time of us waiting to swap out all of those rooms.
Okay, very good. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Barrett, earlier you mentioned, um, you know, when you're, well, let me ask you this first off. Are you going to be removing, uh, furniture and items out of the rooms that are going to be decommis- decommissioned?
Yes, I'm basically going to have to take all of the equipment and all the benches and everything out to, to do that. I would like to mention that, you know, our building is long. So as we're working, we're fixing the closest ACs first to Artesia and working our way to the back of the facility. So that any of the ACs that are the closest to, uh, Artesia and Beverly and all of that, those are the very first ones that we have in plans right now to, uh, swap out.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so earlier, a few minutes ago, you stated that there would be no, you, you know, you're almost guaranteeing that there would be no order from, from decommissioning these rooms. But then earlier in the meeting, when we talked about the legal operation, removing all its equipment and everything else like that, it created an, a, a smell. You don't believe you're going to have that same issue here?
Well, fortunately for us, those back two units that we're looking to, uh, change to grow, I have the space to sit that equipment inside, uh, outside.
So it won't be exiting your facility?
No, it will not.
So that's how you'll be able to manage that?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. So what do we do? Are we going to allow him to do his construction in a period of time where we will not expose him to fines? Or do we still put him on that schedule?
Well, let me just chime in, uh, I wouldn't say no fine, because if it becomes so egregious, we should fine, you know? If it becomes worse than where it is now.
Well, that's a hard discussion.
Well, I, I, I think.
It's an all or nothing deal on the.
No, what I'm saying is, uh, at, at certain level, I can, I, I can tolerate some kind of odor, but they need to do their job. I don't want them to give them a blank check, basically during this time. You can do whatever you want, don't change the filter, whatever. I, I just don't want to go there.
And I don't think he will, but do you have any ideas, Mr. Stewart, on how we could, uh, get his best performance?
You could grant a six-month permit and we could bring it back if we notice any great disorders and review it.
Mr. Attorney, have a suggestion?
If we can have a ten-minute pause, let me confer with the city manager on a harebrained idea.
Oh, okay. Even better.
Uh, we're going to recess for ten minutes.
I got to the restroom.
All right, we're assembled again. It's, uh, had a ten-minute break, it's ten minutes after twelve.
Recording in progress.
All right, we're continuing our meeting after having a health break. And our discussion was about Joint Forces LLC. I'll give you my opinion and you guys can go anywhere you want. There seems to be two considerations here. How long do we allow for him to be able to do the construction that he needs to do to improve the situation over there? We've interviewed him, he says he can do it in six months. So if he says he can do it in six months, I believe that we should grant that. On the other hand, I don't want him to be able to put out any kind of odors and not have the, uh, responsibility for it. So my suggestion would be that we leave in place the current ramifications for having a fine imposed if he does have some expulsion of noticeable odors. So we kind of met him both halfway, we've given him the timeframe beyond five weeks. But we're still going to keep in check his operation to make sure that he is, the neighbors, neighbors are protected. So that would be my thought. Sonny, go with what you think.
Thank you, Mayor, for considering that. And my only question is, what will be the benchmark, uh, for the first six, during the, those six months?
I would use the same criteria we now use.
Okay, because I want, I, I'm, I'm very cognizant of the, of the concerns of the, uh, of the residents, especially in the area. So I, my bottom line is, I just don't want to make it worse.
Yeah, it, our, our general benchmark has been if we can smell on the opposite curb, uh, in front of their, the front of the building. And then we feel that the odors have, have gone beyond what's acceptable, then we will carry it. So that's kind of the threshold we've been using.
Okay, so I, I leave it to the staff's judgment. Again, the bottom line is, I just don't want to make it worse.
All right, but and you're, you were, uh, not going with the six months. You can accept the six months?
Yeah, uh, bas- based on the clarification because of the, uh, the timing.
Of the construction.
Again, the, the way I understood it is, um, he's going to, seven and eight is going to be open and then decommission one and two and then, so it's kind of like, like a domino. So it's not, it's not really an expansion in the beginning, because he's just replacing the decommissioned rooms. So at the end, he'll be expanding once he finishes, uh, five and six, something like that.
Mr. Sanchez, your opinion?
Uh, Mr. Ray, I think that, uh, yeah, I agree with, with what we're stating here. I think, uh, it's, it's a fair, fair route to take, yeah.
Mr. Amada?
I'm good with that.
Mr. Dutton?
Do we take consideration of odor? And I say this with an experience of people smoking it, walking down the sidewalk, smoking it in cars driving by, hanging out in parking lot, smoking it? Because it does put out an odor and everybody smelled it.
Well, it's an iffy thing, I get it. And we've had, we've had that experience too.
And I, I smell marijuana in my business. Three out of the five days a week, I'm there, least.
Yeah, it's kind of a consistent thing. It's consistent thing, when, when code enforcement checks it, it's not just a, a three-second drive-by. They'll go back several times during the course of an afternoon or a day. So if it's a consistent odor, we're going to pretty much assume it's not somebody smoking marijuana.
It's not a one-time thing.
Correct.
We don't, I've never got any guidelines on how, I know we monitor, I know code enforcement's there three or four times driving by.
Yeah.
I just have no details.
We don't have.
Details and how the smell is decided to fine.
We're kind of making up the rules as we go, because it's all new stuff and, but, but we exactly what you said is what we're trying to not have is people just smoking marijuana on the sidewalk. We know it occurs, we've seen it, we've all smelled it. And so when we get complaints about, uh, joint forces, we check pretty consistently. For instance, the last one, we received the complaint originally two days before the second citation was issued. And we verified those odors for consecutive days at different times. So that's, it's, we, we want to be fair, you know, but we still want to respond to the complaints that come through, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council? Just for, so that we have clarification, this would be a, a license that would expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, unless otherwise renewed before that period by the city council. Is that accurate?
No, I don't think so. I think it has to be a revocation if there's time after six months. I mean, he's fixing something.
That's why I want clarification, because ordinarily, it's a, it's a one-year license.
I think it's a one-year license, so we don't have to come back, but he fixes his stuff and he's odor-free. Then we don't have to come back here to re-do the permit. Now, if he is still an odor, this guy's got problems.
Okay, so the check is really its direction to the city manager to verify through, on the consent calendar or through some other means to the city council that it's now in compliance within six months. And if not, then we commence the revocation procedures for the, for the permit. The, the reason I ask is previously, for, uh, last year, I think it was, or the year before, uh, with actually NC three, the city issued a provisional license which lasted three months. And unless it was continued till the end of the year, within that three-month period, it automatically expired at the end of March or February, I forget which one it was. Uh, but the city council subsequently extended it for the full year. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with regard to how we're setting up this, this particular six-month review period. If it's a full-year permit, great. Then if within six months, there's a problem, then we'll recommend that we start revoking the, the permit. Uh, that just takes an additional process, but I just want to make sure that we have full direction from the city council on what you want to do.
All right, let me poll my couns- Sonny, one-year permit with a six-month, uh, probation?
Understanding is basically on the six-month, the question is who takes the action? The council takes the action or the applicant takes the action? So if it's six months, if it's only for six months, then we don't need to do anything. The applicant has to produce.
The ball's in his court.
Yeah, the bill, whereas on the other hand, if it's one year, it's subject to the beyond six months. So the, 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 the onus is on us to take action. So I think that's the difference.
I believe he's going through a lot of expense and heartache to get to the point. We need to offer him a one-year warranty.
There's, I think there's no question about that, it's a matter of.
How do we expedite six months?
Who takes the action on the six month?
Well, I think if, if there's no more complaints after six months, then we're good to go. You have to see it.
I think the, the city attorney's original comment is probably the best way to go. I mean, I think the council gives him a six-month permit that expires in six months unless the council, prior to the end of that six months, extends it beyond. That gives them up to six months for compliance, which I think we have to do it. Otherwise, we're going to be, it'll be very difficult for me to assert, all right, they're in full compliance. When two weeks later, they may not be. And then you guys extend the permit for another, you know, another six months, get it out to a year. I don't want to do that. That doesn't make sense and it puts a lot of pressure on code enforcement on a very unscientific process here. So I think the original recommendation is the six months, let's see where it goes. And if, if in four months, if Mr. Barrett is correct, then we bring it back to the council and say, hey, they, they've substantially complied, to the best of our knowledge. And we take testimony and the rest, and then you can extend it out past that. I think that's the way I'd rather do that.
But six months is just for construction to get it done. Maybe you get it done sooner, maybe you won't. Okay, so what if it's not done? Okay, and then is there a phase after that that we're monitoring?
Then we'd have to.
I mean, we're not going to have any testing data.
If he doesn't get the construction done, then we have to put the item on consideration for the council, we'll have to make another decision then, prior to the end of that six months. That's the only way I could see this going forward.
But we still have the tool of finding him as well.
Right. Um, I, I, there's, there's just no real easy way to do this. And, and I think the cleanest way is to put the hard expiration date at six months and then we can take the action prior to that.
Reevaluate in six months.
Correct, and we'll reevaluate sometime prior to that, so we, we don't get behind the curve. And, and there may be, you know, you may be right, there may be a construction problem we have to consider.
Why don't, we, you know, we all kind of want to give him the year, give the year with a reevaluation in six months that we may revoke it.
Then we have a revocation proceeding, which is a little bit difficult.
That's a different thing, okay.
Right.
Okay.
And then we have the onus is on us to prove.
Right.
A basis for revocation, which I.
So when he pays his fees, does he pay six months in fees?
Yeah, I think that's.
Six months?
That would only be fair.
That'd be fair.
Because every problem we try to solve starts another one.
No, no, I think that's right. I actually thought of that. I think it would be fair to do a, a six-month payment on that.
I'm sure he wouldn't mind that.
Hey, we're givers.
Yeah.
All right, now we've got three possibilities here, whether or not we go six months or a year on the permit. Whether we, uh, allow him, we're, we're going to continue to be able to find him during the construction phase. And we're going to give him six months to do the construction. Those are the three things that we're speaking of, correct?
I think I just got nods from staff and you guys for doing this six months.
All right, so we got.
Doing the six months with a six-month review, he pays six months in fees? We decide then it's six months from now.
But we, but not require another, an additional application if that's six months?
No, no, he doesn't have to pay, no, he's.
He gets a pro-rated, uh, fee schedule.
All right, Sonny, what do you think?
Let me just clarify that. So, so right now, uh, we're, we're kind of, we're kind of leaning towards six months.
Let me ask Carl to restate his original motion they recommended earlier.
No, no, no.
Well, I mean, his language for the potential motion. I think it's six months and as Carl said, unless the council takes action prior to the expiration date at six months, um, to extend, it will, it will sunset. Does that mean, I forgot.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is what I understand thus far. That the council is willing to issue a provisional permit that would expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, unless otherwise renewed by the city council at some ti- time before that date. Number two, that the fines would not be suspended during that time period. So if there continues to be violations, the city will continue to issue fines, uh, with regard to that. If and when there's an application for an extension of the permit before June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, the applicant and staff will have to comment on where they are with regard to construction and how they are complying with the municipal code. And if those three things are accurate, then that would be my recommended motion.
Pretty much the process we have undertaken today, but in smaller form, so, yeah.
It's clarified, so for the benefit of the applicants, so there will not be additional fees to be assessed?
Right, so it would be a six, at, at the time that they applied for a, for an extension of their six-month permit to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, there would be no additional fee associated with the application. It would be simply confirmation that they've complied with the city council's expectations and are requesting an extension of their permit to, to December thirty-first.
I guess we could say we're giving them working capital for the next six months.
That's exactly what we, that's exactly what I was thinking. We wanted sent them to finish this work, yeah.
Sonny, are you okay?
Yeah, I, I like it because there's no, we don't have to go to revocation, because revocation is painful, yeah.
All right, so you're good with the six months, six-month permit, six-month construction and continued defining procedure we have in place?
Take action to extend it to around six months.
The formal motion is exactly, I, I would recommend the formal motion be exactly as the city attorney expressed at the application. The permit expires June thirtieth, um, prior, unless renewed by the council prior to that time. And fines would continue, um, if there's odor violations.
Mr. Sanchez, are you an opinion?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm in agreeance.
All right, Mr. Hamada?
Yes, that's acceptable. It's, it's, it's a tough one, but yeah, that's fine.
All right, Mr. Dutton?
So I got this anti-spit device. I don't want to splatter you with the words. Yeah, I'm fine. Would somebody make a motion?
We all talk.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion, um, as prescribed or as recommended by the city attorney. Can I do, leave it that simple or do I need to state it all?
No, I think that's in the minutes, yeah.
You like that one?
Yes, that's fine.
I'll second, uh, Mayor will second the motion. I very rarely give that, but I think we can do it now. All right, so we have a motion by council member Victor Sanchez, supported by Mayor Dan Coops. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santanés?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. All right, should we go, we'll start with four A that we were going to do earlier today?
We have one more.
One more.
Dynasty, dynasty.
Dynasty.
What's that?
Peanut butter jelly.
Oh, that's right, I'm not done yet. No.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to renew the, um, permits for Dynasty Alliance Grow Inc., subject to the vetting of the new owner as defined in the, uh, order, uh, resolution. And also subject to the applicant obtaining the, uh, state license.
And the additional.
And the additional.
And the additional fingerprinting, right?
Second then.
You included the additional fingerprinting?
The whole vetting, the whole vetting process.
Is that the live scan or whatever they call? All right, so we have a motion by council member Sunny Santanes, supported by council member Hamada. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santanes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, we've concluded our cannabis discussion for the year, correct? Or at least for six months?
Yeah, for six months.
All right, let's go back to four A. And, uh, Mr. Stewart, you could read the introduction? I understand.
So it's considered as possible action to approve salary and benefit adjustments for city manager and city clerk positions. Uh, for the city manager, proposed adjustment for FY 2021, 22 would be an increased salary of $16,142 and increase benefits by $4,010 for a total salary of $246,735 without benefits. Proposed adjustments for FY 22, 23 would increase salary by $7,402 and increase benefits by $1,840 for a total salary of $254,137 without benefits. For the city clerk, the proposed adjustments for FY 21, 22 would increase salary by $8,810 and increase benefits by $1,360 for a total salary of $126,270 without benefits. The proposed adjustments for FY 22, 23 would increase salary by $9,470 with an increase of benefits by $1,608 for a total salary of $135,740, $40 without benefits. And I guess when I've read it, you can ask your questions of Mr. Berger.
All right, so we have a subcommittee that's composed of the mayor and the mayor pro tem, and we have met with our current city manager and city clerk and had discussions as to what it was that would be fair with their compensation. As you well know, we take a survey of 13 cities and determine what like positions pay in those cities. We're always trying to be midway in that formulation. So we're not paying the most, we're not paying the least, we're paying right in the middle. The performance of these two folks is exemplary. We have made some great strides in both our city council administration through Mr. Stewart, and of course, our city clerk office, as far as I can see, is flawless after having had someone here for 30 years that really did a good job, and we always were concerned as to how it would go in subsequent city clerks. And Myra has done magnificently. And so it's fair, based on the committee's recommendation, to give them these kinds of benefits and these kinds of salaries as we proceed forward. They both agreed to five year contracts, so we can have stability at this point in time.
No, just city clerk, mine renewed, my contract renews annually. If you want to put a five year one on, I'm fine, I don't mind. I mean, but we've only negotiated the the next two years salary and benefit adjustments.
Okay, well.
Yeah, it's really up to the council on that, but.
Well, we'll have that discussion, but I really had thought that that was what we were in agreement on, but we'll show us all the love here, you know?
Seriously have no preference. If the council feels better doing a five year fixed contract, I'm completely fine with it.
Well, you'll be 106 then, but that's okay.
Yeah, well, I will be 106 then, but.
So, questions? Mr. Santanes?
Yeah, but I I want to make a couple of comments.
And I wanted to give you a preview of why we arrived at this.
Yes, oh, and thank you for the introduction. And my first comment is, I'm really honored to be part of the the council that selected the three individuals who reported the council, namely the city manager, city clerk, and city attorney. And I was very pleased with all of their performance during the past years. And the city made significant strides over the time. And I I I think the improvements in the city overall, the morale of the employees, and, um, the response from our residents speak highly of the leadership of three individuals, particularly under the leadership of the city manager. And I'm glad that they took on their dispositions in the city, because I know that they have other, they have choices. They have a choice, and we have a choice too. But I am really glad that they chose the city over others, and that is fixed volume. And I'm really, again, I'm really appreciative of them staying with the city, because we have a lot more plans going on for the city. Uh, we haven't reached our max yet. There's always room for improvement, and I really appreciate them staying on for whatever time it is, whether it's one year, five years, whatever time we can get from them. I I think it will benefit the city and the residents of our city. And in terms of this pay adjustment, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, we strive to, because, um, the point is, in terms of, I've been in the HR department before, uh, it it takes a good, um, attractive best of the city to keep good employees. Because if you cannot keep good employees, then they'll they'll find something else. And I'm glad that we're able to do this pay adjustment. It's not, uh, it's not really significant, uh, it's decent. We are in the median, as you mentioned, we're in the median of 13 comparator cities, which is typical in the industry, in the city government industry, even in the private sector. That's kind of normal in terms of, um, compensating key employees. So I'm I'm really appreciative of them continuing to serve the city and our residents. And I will, I will, when appropriate, I will make the motion to to adopt this recommendation from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sanchez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Without pretty much duplicating, uh, council member Sunny Santanes, uh, wonderful comments. Obviously, I agree with them, and I just want to add that I'm very thankful for the team that you guys have built. I'm very thankful for these three individuals, specifically in this case for Mr. Stewart and Ms. Ochiki for the work that they've done. They know that there's a lot of room for improvement, and they they are are willing to take on those challenges. They've done a lot of great work for us, for the city, and there's so much more to come. And I think that that's a, you know, we've shared these comments before. It's an embodiment embodiment of the work that the council has done and the leadership of the two individuals here that were, um, reviewing this this afternoon now, since it is afternoon. Uh, just thank you to both of you, and really glad to see a five year contract with our city clerk. And just, again, thank you for your your work and your dedication. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's just comments. Uh, again, we have a great staff team here. And, um, again, with these individuals, we have the highest levels of competency, like commitment, and courage during this time. That's a tough period. And, I mean, this pandemic and whatever it's all brought, and and we've come out of it. And so with that, it 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 just equates to a very sincere trust. And, uh, we we trust these individuals. So, um, again, glad to see that, uh, we're able to, you know, bring some further compensation, get them up to, okay, the mid level kind of thing, but, uh, or so. Uh, but, uh, again, it it it's a it's a great time for Bellflower. And, uh, with that, uh, I mean, that's resulted from the great team we have. So, and I'd be happy to second the motion if, once it comes down to it, so, all right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Yeah, yeah. Mr. Dutton?
Yeah, yeah, they've both been doing a good job, but I got a question for the city attorney. There's something I gotta disclose. I got a birthday card from the city clerk.
I I did as well.
Oh, you did that? Oh. Well, my concern was I didn't get one from the city manager. You got my follow up question. Does anybody get a birthday card from the city manager?
But you got coffee.
Myra's much nicer than the both of us.
Anyway, um, working with them, with their tenure here, um, it's been a pleasure. There are a big part of the city of Bellflower being as healthy as we healthy as we are now and changing this town and the way city hall does business over the last decade. And with that, uh, thank you, and somebody make a motion?
Let me speak too. I gave the preliminaries as to how we got here, you know? No, but.
Closer.
I totally endorse our staff, and we lead from the top. And we, and these, including Carl, Myra, of course, and Jeff, have employed a magnificent staff who remains with us and grows with us. And I didn't realize until we had a couple of employees that worked with Jeff move on to other higher positions in other cities, namely Randy Stover and, uh, yeah. What was it? Brian Smoot?
Yeah.
Um, who have learned the craft from one of the finest city managers in the area. And as time marches on, like Jeff said, I used to be the youngest guy in the room, now I'm like, not. And so we are blessed with the experience of his other cities that he's managed. And we're the culmination of learning all the things that he has brought to the table. And he knows a lot about city business, and it pays off for us. When we develop a downtown, and that has fingerprints on it from many councils, but we were lucky enough to have the right city manager at the right time to be able to pull these things together. We wouldn't have that city fire museum or the event center without his guidance and Steve Patterson and the parking garage, and all the good things that are coming from that. The In-N-Out, the Golden Corral, the Exchange, the Steel Craft. That all happened in the last six, seven years while we had great relationships. And I can't say enough good about what we have. Nothing lasts forever. We all get older, we all change, we all retire, but we have really had a wonderful experience the last eight or nine years with the current management. And I only hope we can extend this to get this city on an even better footing so as to be competitive for the next 25 years. But I think we've established that with some of the activities that we've put on with, uh, you know, big step, we just spent two hours on cannabis. We all stuck our neck out on that deal, and we're trying to maintain a Bellflower that we all know and love using a product that we don't necessarily endorse. But nevertheless, I would, if you'll, you know, we'll put in there the five year deal. If you're not accepting of that, that's fine, but I'd really like to see both Myra and you in lockstep on the five year thing. Carl's fine, unless he sits in that chair where Panona used to sit, we're okay with him, so.
No, the five year deal is fine with me.
All right, that's cool. But that's the way I'd like the motion to read, just because I don't want to shop for another city manager. All right, open up for a motion. Who wants that?
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd be honored to make a motion for the city of Bellflower to authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to the city manager's employment agreement, AFN 557, in a form approved by the city attorney, reflecting the subcommittee's recommendation. And second, to authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to the city clerk's employment agreement, AFN 686, in a form approved by the city attorney, reflecting the subcommittee's recommendation. And finally, to authorize the city manager or designate to make adjustment to the city's budget as needed to reflect the city council's action.
I'd be happy and honored to second that.
All right, so we have a motion by council member Sunny Santanes, supported by council member Hamada. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santanes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
I just want to say thank you, real quickly. Um, I know I'm speaking on behalf of Myra, and I know I'm speaking on behalf of of Carl Berger, but this council's a pleasure to work for, and we're happy to do what we do, and and we look forward to doing a lot more in the future, so.
What we'd like to hear you say is that this is the best council you've worked for in your entire life.
Without, without question.
It's not even close.
I I second that, Mayor. I second that council. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, will that be reflected in the minutes?
Verbatim. All right, move path to love fest here and move on to four B. Mr. Stewart?
So this is consideration of possible action to provide direction regarding the city's allocation of American Rescue Plan Act coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. And Mr. Dallog has been working diligently on this issue for the last two months, and we have some recommendations for the city council, and I'll let him get started with that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. As Mr. Stewart mentioned, the item before you is consideration of possible action to provide direction regarding the city's allocation of American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, local recovery funds. I'll provide a brief background of the funds. I'll go over the eligible uses and expenditure categories for the funds, and then I'll present staff's funding recommendations. So ARPA was signed by the president in March of 2021 and included a local fiscal recovery fund component. The city of Bellflower was allocated $21.5 million in local recovery funds. The city received 50% of that in May 2021, and the other 50% is anticipated to be deposited in May of 2022. These funds are being implemented and administered by the United States Treasury, which released its rules and regulations known as the interim final rule and its compliance and reporting manual in May and June 2021, respectively. The final rule has yet to be released, but staff is confident that the ARPA local recovery fund expenditures recommended here will continue to be eligible. The funds can be used for costs incurred from March 3rd, 2021. They must be obligated by December of 2024, and they must be spent by December of 2026. So now we can take a look at the statutory eligible uses and expenditure categories for the local recovery funds. There are four eligible uses of the local recovery funds. One, to respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. Two, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to such eligible workers of the recipient or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. Three, for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of such recipient due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year of the recipient prior to the emergency. So a simpler way to say this is that the city can pay for the provision of government services with ARPA funds that are filling the gap of lost revenue due to the pandemic as compared to the year before the pandemic started. The interim final rule provides a formula for entities to use to determine the annual revenue loss amounts. And finally, the fourth item is to make necessary improvements in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. Now, within those four listed eligible uses, there are eight expenditure categories. Those include public health, negative economic impacts, services to disproportionately impacted communities, premium pay, infrastructure, as mentioned earlier, that's specific to water, sewer, and broadband, revenue loss replacement administration, and other items which are classified as intergovernmental and non-governmental transfers. So we'll move on to the funding recommendations. In providing the following funding recommendations, staff has considered city and community needs, the regulations and reporting requirements, and the staff time and labor required for implementation and reporting. Staff's funding recommendations are listed in this chart on the left with the corresponding annual funding amounts in the columns to the right. And these include reimbursement of revenue loss, water infrastructure, in-home wireless broadband access points for low-income households, and general fund COVID expenditures. At the bottom of the chart, there are funding recommendations staff is making as a result of the budget savings the city will realize by being able to address the revenue loss incurred during the COVID-19 public health emergency. These recommendations include a new community facility at Sims Park, a three-day holiday shutdown between Christmas and New Year's, an online permitting and plan submittal software platform, and business development programs. I'm going to go over each of these items in more detail right now. So the first allocation item is the city revenue loss funding. And the amounts that we are talking about are for calendar year 2020, $4.3 million, and that was auditor verified. And then we have for 2021, $4.2 million is estimated. 2022, $3.8 estimated, and 2023, $3.8 million for estimated. This fits in the category under the interim final rule of provision. This fits in the category under the interim final rule of provision of government services. And as previously mentioned, this requires annual calculations pursuant to the interim final rule. And these amounts are estimated as fluctuations in various grant revenues that the city receives can impact the statutory calculation. Additionally, the estimated amount for calendar year 2023 is subject to the city's remaining ARPA funds that we may have in the pot at the end of the, at the end of the period. The next funding recommendation is $5 million for municipal water system improvements. And this expenditure fits in the categories of drinking water, treatment, and drinking water transmission and distribution. Recipients may use these funds for water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure specifically. Permitted water infrastructure projects would typically have to be also eligible to receive financial assistance through the EPA's Clean Water State Revolving Fund or Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. The third ARPA funding recommendation is to allocate $1 million to in-home wireless broadband access points. This expenditure fits in the category of broadband other projects. And in conjunction with the citywide wireless broadband project, this program will provide low-income Bellflower households with free in-home wireless broadband access points to help close the digital divide. Also listed on the chart, but without a separate slide, are eligible general fund COVID-19 expenditures of approximately $81,000 annually. These expenses include various COVID-19 supplies, personal protective equipment, and payroll costs specific to COVID-19 response and prevention. As mentioned earlier, through the revenue loss funding permitted by the interim final rule, significant budget savings will be realized over the next few years. This has enabled staff to explore funding additional activities. It is important to note that the following proposed expenditures are subject to and based on the avenue, annual revenue loss calculations for calendar years 2021 through 2023, which could fluctuate. I'll now describe each of these recommendations. So number one, a new community facility at Sims Park. $9.77 million in funds would be used to construct a new multi-generational community center on the northwest corner of the Sims Park property. The new facility would serve and offer programming for youth and senior citizens in a split-use concept. Initial design features include controlled access for safety and security, an inviting lobby and reception area, meeting and activity rooms, an outdoor patio, kitchen, restrooms, and administrative offices. This project design, vision, and its features evolved through the initial 2015 Los Angeles County Needs Assessment and the subsequent review and approval of the city council's LA County Measure A funding project list. Second item is a three-day city holiday shutdown between December 27th and December 29th of 2021 only. $115,000 in funds will fund three days of pay for full-time employees to implement a three-day closure of city facilities during the week between Christmas and New Year's. Full-time employees who must work during this time and do not receive administrative compensatory time, such as some finance, public works, or possibly parks and rec staff, will receive 1.5 hours of compensatory time for every one hour of work. Item three is online permitting and plan submittal software platform. This item will cost $115,500 in the first year for setup and then $49,000 annually for a total of $213,500 over three years. This program will enable residents, businesses, and developers to apply for permits and submit plans from computers and mobile devices. The last item is economic development, business development programs. We're looking at doing $738,000 of funding over three years for various programs and activities, which include a small business microloan program at $175,000, downtown small-scale manufacturing rental assistance program at $180,000, separate English, which would be online, and Spanish in-person entrepreneurial training courses at $195,000, small business spotlight videos at $30,000, marketing and promotion of these programs at $60,000 over the three years, and consultant costs associated with the formation of two merchant-based business improvement districts along Bellflower Boulevard, estimated at $98,000. This concludes my presentation. Staff recommends the city council provide direction regarding the recommended expenditures described here in the presentation, and staff is available to answer questions.
Thank you, Jim. And any questions of Jim? We'll start with Sunny.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Delalanga, for this very extensive report and I appreciate all the effort you put in. I mean, it's, it took a lot of effort to do this. I, I just noticed this while you, while you were describing. There's, if you can clarify, there's a minor discrepancy here between the, the write-up on the city revenue loss on 2023. On page two of seven, it says 3.8, but I just saw it now on the chart. Attachment B, it's 2.8 million.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. This is Anna Garren. I am the finance manager. The 2.8 million that you see on the presentation, that's just the residual amount because we're getting 21.5. The revenue loss could be more, but that's just the residual amount after all the expenses that we have listed on the funding recommendation slide.
That's in year 23, 24.
So we could realize up to 3 million, but because we only received 21.5 million and in fiscal years 2021 to 2023, we already expended. The difference is what we're showing as the revenue loss.
Okay, so, but the revenue loss could be, based on what you know now, it could be 3.8 million.
Yes, but there could be, it's a rough estimate. It depends on what grants we're going to receive in the future.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. And my next question is on the three-day holiday shutdown. Based on this staff report, it's going to be dependent on what's going to happen in 21, 22, 23. But don't we have to make a decision now because we're going to give this to them next month, I mean, this month?
It's a one-time recommendation. It's not an ongoing recommendation.
I know, but my point is, it's going to, it's not going to be subject to all these things that could happen in the revenue loss in the future. If we want to commit it now, we should commit it now. Right?
Anna, do you have a response to that question?
Yes, that is correct. I think the note that says it's contingent and adjusted based on the revenue loss, where we don't know what the revenue loss is going to be in fiscal years 22, 23, and 23 and 24. But the projected revenue loss for 21, 22 is estimated at 4.2 million. It's not yet final because when the slide was prepared or the presentation was prepared, we only have data up to October, so it could still change. But we're saying that we have revenue loss as of fiscal year 21, 22 to cover for that proposed holiday shutdown.
Yeah, my, my only point here, I, I think we should move it up because we're making, we're making a commitment already. This, I mean, this month, this, it's, it's going to happen this month. So I think they should move it up in terms of contingent to the revenue, revenue loss. It should move up already as one of those expenditures.
Can I make another clarification? The revenue loss will be used for the provision of government services like public safety, public works. And then the savings from that is what we'll use to fund the, the proposed items that you see on that slide.
Okay. And my, my third question is on the, the new community facilities at Sims Park. And, and under what category would that qualify for the ARPA funding?
That's similar to what Ms. Garren already discussed is that this is a result of the revenue savings by compensating the city for the revenue loss. So this is outside of the ARPA funds.
Okay, so if there's no, if, let's say if the revenue loss is the way it's anticipated, then it cannot be charged. So basically, it's going to be a swap. So if the revenue loss doesn't happen as we expected, then we can use that money to fund the facilities.
We'll use as much revenue loss as we, as we can get to help fund these items.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, all right, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santinez. Mr. Sanchez.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I'd like to follow up on that question that the council member just mentioned. So what we're doing here specifically for the park investment is we're swapping funds. So the general fund will be replenished and then we're using those funds to actually conduct the project?
We're, yeah, basically, yes. So the ARPA funds are going to, into the general fund. And as a result of that, based on those calculations for revenue loss, we are estimating those amounts and programming them for these activities outside of the ARPA funds.
So then my next question, so then when we report back, right? Because we're going to have to report back on how we utilize these funds. We're reporting back that these funds, the nine point, you know, 9.3 was, was, are we saying that it was replenishing the general fund? Or are we saying that it was used for the new community facility?
We are saying it was used for the provision of government services in the general fund.
Got it. So then what would stop us from utilizing it for other, other items such as property acquisition for economic development purposes?
Our auditors.
You can't buy property with this stuff.
No, you could. I mean, you could reprogram it and buy property with it. But again, the way you do it is just off the revenue losses. You juice, your general fund is increased by the amount that the losses are calculated at. Then you could reprogram those funds to buy property if you wanted to.
Mr. Berger, any concerns there?
So the rules with regard to acquisition of, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the rules with regard to acquisition of property, as many of you are aware, have changed since the dissolution of RDA. So to answer the general question, yes, the city can acquire property and it has gone through the process and acquired property. There's a process for it and what have you. So the city manager accurately suggests that you can buy property with general fund money. The question specifically, though, that you're asking is whether or not you can use ARPA money to put it into the general fund and then repurpose it for acquisition of property. Theoretically, yes, because the ARPA money is reimbursing the city for, for losses. I, I think that you had mentioned to me that there was another jurisdiction that, that was, that was doing this. Off the top of my head, I don't know of a tie between the ARPA money and whether it tracks through your general fund and if you have to use it for operating expenses and for the reimbursement purposes. That's something that maybe Anna or, or Mr. Delalanga can answer. It would be buried in a grant agreement or the federal regulations. Theoretically, if it actually is general fund money and it has simply gone into the general fund, then it's, then there's no attachment to it. And theoretically, the city council could indeed use it for property acquisition if it, if it's so desired.
So the, the, the ARPA money has to go towards the provision of governmental services. And so that's how we would track the ARPA money going into and reporting that to the US Treasury. And provision of governmental services means maintenance of Pago-funded building of infrastructure, including roads, modernization of cybersecurity stuff in the city, health services, environmental remediation, school or educational services, and the provision of police, fire, and other public safety services. So we would have to show that our ARPA funds are being used in those categories within the general fund. And then the general fund savings realized from that is what we're using to fund these other activities.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this goes back to my theoretical thing. Assuming that there's no string that goes with the money into your general fund, then you could do that. But as Mr. Delalanga indicates, there is a string that, that's attached to it and we have to report back to the treasury exactly how.
In all fairness, it's a workaround. You mean, the way the other city, I know one other city has done it. We've talked about this and it's a workaround. They've defunded items that they'd previously funded the general fund. They backfilled those items with the ARPA money so it meets the federal requirement and then freed up money that they had previously had for land acquisition. I don't feel comfortable doing that and I'm not, I don't want to recommend that. But I'm just saying, it's theoretically possible. That's all, yeah.
No, no, that, I wouldn't want to go that route. It was more so if there's, I think you just answered my question, then, Mr. Delalanga, you answered, there will be a string attached to it. So it's not necessarily just going straight into the general fund and then not being reported. So, so that, that answers my question. Yeah, no, that's a, that's a loophole and we don't want to play that. I get that. Okay, very good. That answers my question, though. Thank you.
Okay, so just to be clear, it's not, what we think of as general fund, it's, it's not really a general fund.
Right. That's, that's kind of what, from his actual statement now, that, clarify that.
Yeah, it goes into the general fund budget, but it is actually a restricted fund within the general fund.
Yeah, that's a good clarification. Thank you for that. But then you drew up another question in my mind, and actually I had it already. From your economic development standpoint, it sounds like we could use some of these funds for public safety?
Yes, and I believe the finance department is looking at designating those for the provision of government services under the public safety section of that because that's the easy, probably the easiest to justify and show that it's being used for that.
Okay.
So yeah, that, that's where these funds will probably go as a part of that revenue loss calculation.
And that would be from your 9.3 or?
That would be from those four, those four amounts of the calculations, the estimated and confirmed by the auditor that are going towards general fund losses.
Okay, so just the 324,000?
No, it, it would be more along the lines of 9 million or more, depending on what we're going to actually get.
So you're, so you're bulking in, if, if I'm understanding correctly, you're, you're kind of packaging the community facility in the Sims Park with public safety as well and other, other services?
So by freeing up the general fund money that would pay for public safety services, that would pay for the community facility.
So it's the savings that, 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 okay, thank you. That clarifies it. So it's the savings that are being used for the community facility, but the ARPA funds will be used for public safety. Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you, okay. All right, thank you. I'm a little slow. All right. My next question then was, oh, I guess that answers all the questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Seth.
Mr. Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, thank you staff for getting us to this point. It's, I know it's been long and cumbersome and kind of like everybody's scratching their head all the time. And it's, yeah, it's, it's been an amazing process because, I mean, not the positive amazing. It's kind of like, wow, you know, okay, hey, we got this money, but it's been sitting in the bank for how long now? And, you know, half of it and so on. And then, then trying to figure out what categories will qualify. And, and, and I know there's been some talk at the beginning of, of, here's some possibilities. And then we've been fine-tuning it. So I'm, I'm glad you're, you can get it, you know, with the laser and, you know, pinpointing it. The, I mean, this, this money that could go and, and, and my colleagues have brought up some other, you know, the, the other opportunities and, and, you know, and I see, I've seen other categories that, yeah, there could be. As mentioned, public safety and, you know, the environment kind of listed there, technology. And, and I know at the beginning, we were, we were talking about even, you know, supporting homeless somehow with that. And yes, acquisition, be it more parkland and possibly, you know, housing services. So it, I'm, I'm glad we're, you know, getting it out there. And, but hopefully down the road, we'll, you know, fine-tune it further. It's still amazing that the feds have not completed the final rule. So I hope there are no changes that, and I'm glad you're comfortable with, with, with what's out there so far. And, but, you know, the one thing with technology, and, and I've noticed here at City Hall, the technology seems to fluctuate at times, you know. It's good and it's, and it's bad kind of thing. So I don't know if that's, that's where some future money is headed there. So I don't know if that's, that's where some future money is headed there. One question on the online permitting and plan submittal software. Jim, is there, is, is there a certain provider that's, that's already been looked at for that, or is that, that's just the broad idea and that hopefully the funds that we're designating will cover it? Because sometimes that's a very, very expensive item, so.
Yes, Councilmember Hamada, I've worked with Beth Corpus, Planning Director, to get that estimated figure. She contacted a vendor of that software and that platform to find out ballpark number as to what that would cost. We would then have to go out and procure that and by doing bids and so forth. So that's an estimated number.
All right, there's nobody in mind. All right, okay, yeah, that's, all right, at least, all right. Overall, I think it's a good spread of funds that you've considered. Again, there's no question about the municipal water system improvements, and I'm glad broadband is, is now coming forward, and where are we at on our project now? I know that there's, there's been some advancement, and we're hopefully on the verge, or there's still some tweaking of the, of the, either the, you know, the equipment out there, placement, and so on.
Well, we've recently provided the consultant with city-owned locations within the city that could be used for the transmission of the wireless signal throughout the city, and the news was good, actually, that based on the locations of the various city facilities, that the coverage for the city will be essentially obtained by using city facilities almost primarily. So that is actually going to speed up the process, and we should be able to get coverage for, for the whole city, and, and this may even help speed up the implementation process. I'm not going to go out on a limb or anything yet, but because of the, all, you know, the ships in the, ships in the harbor and everything else that's going on, but it, it's, it's positive, and all the background stuff, all the, all the detailed programming, the determining how far the signal goes from the various points, that's all being done right now, and we should hopefully see some implementation early in the new year.
Jim, what's the, this right now, the rough ballpark estimate of the number of, number of in-home wireless broadband access points, and I assume boxes, to low income?
It's, it's several thousand. We did an estimate of, and we're also getting a share of those too by the consultant they're sharing in the cost of those. So I believe it's approximately 10,000 to 12,000 households, based on our count of low-income households in the city, based on the CDBG requirements.
Are you also working with the schools to, to help fine-tune that number? I know there, you know, there may be possibilities out there, but sometimes it really, it's, it's the kids, and, you know, it's the kids that need it, so.
Right, we're, we're going to, we're going to outreach to Bellflower Unified to help get the word out about this program, because it's going to have to be an application process that we can verify that they're low-income, similar to what we do with the resident assistance program with the CDBG CV funds and so forth. So we'll be, we'll be doing as much outreach as we can to get a hold of as many low-income households as we can to get this implemented.
All right. Very good. All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Mr. Dutton.
Thank you. So we got 21 and a half million with the Recovery Act, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just missing something here. I think I'm missing five. Did we spend 5 million of it already? No?
We have revenue losses of 4.3 million last fiscal year. So that was applied towards provision of government services. We're planning on applying it to public safety and a portion of public works cost. The reporting, the next reporting to U.S. Treasury is due January of next year, so that's when we would disclose where we actually used that 4.3 million dollars.
No, I counted for that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
You know what I'm asking then?
Yeah, you have dedicated 5 million dollars for purposes of water infrastructure improvements.
Okay, well, I get that. On the, in the, if you add up all the discussion items, where the 5 million, the 1 million, the 324,000, I come up with 1.7 million and 161,000. And I was trying to get to the 2.5. I mean, the, the 21.5 million, and I don't know where that is. If you add up the laundry list, it doesn't add up to 21 and a half million unless we're accounting for some losses early on. I, I get it, we're accounting for some losses, and then we're estimating, did we?
So 15, 15.1 million is what we're saying is going to be the revenue loss for the next four fiscal, or the next three fiscal years, and then 5 million is what we're committing to the municipal water system infrastructure projects, a million dollars to the in-home wireless broadband access point project, and then 325,000.
Okay, let me explain it this way. We're probably talking about the same thing, but we're coming from two different directions. The water system, the wireless broadband, the COVID expenditures, the Sims Park building, the three-day holiday, the online permitting software buy-in, the economic business development programs, they add up to 1.7 million and some change. You going to help me?
Can I interject? This is Tay.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So you're right, there was 4.3 million dollars of revenue loss that was applied to last fiscal year, and that is not proposed to be programmed for, for use. So you're correct.
Okay, so we took, we've already spent some of that 21.5. Sonny just gave me the, the sheet here, the spreadsheet that's blurry.
Yeah, it's, Tay, it's on Schedule B, where the 20, the breakdown, the 21.4 million dollars.
Yeah, 21.457.
On Schedule B, yeah.
But anyway, that's where I was, I couldn't do the math, and so we, that was a previous year, and now we're just seeing what, what, so we're really not working with the 21 and a half, we're working with more like 16 or 17 million.
You are exactly correct.
Thank you. That's why, that was my disconnect. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Tay, we haven't heard from you all morning, so I figure you taking the 4.7 million.
Anna was doing so well that I didn't want to interject.
Oh, no.
Yeah, when we're asking where the money is, we always get Tay on the phone, right?
Yeah, I might, might lose a million or two, but I can, I can, you know, knowing 5 million's missing.
All right, I have no questions. Is there any more questions that have come up after our discussion? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion. Sonny, the accountant?
No, I, I think the, the staff did a wonderful job in terms of allocating the, the 21.4 million dollars, and I don't know what, what other direction we can give them, because everything is spelled out here.
Yes, and, and the rules may change a little bit, too, you know. They might have different allocations for it.
Right, and I, I think what's going to be the driving force here will be the, the amount of revenue loss in future years. So I'm glad that we're able to do that, because in, in reading this staff report, the bottom line here is, for example, let's say in '21, '22, we have a 4.2 million dollar loss, and that will be covered by general fund slash unrestricted funds, basically. So we're ready to pay for that. But thank goodness, we have the ARPA, so if that were to happen, we will basically use the ARPA to replace that, so we can use that money somewhere else. So thanks to ARPA, we have some kind of cushion in terms of what we can do with this money.
Right.
So I think in terms of direction, I think that's all I can suggest, is just move forward with the staff recommendation and.
You want a motion on this, or you need, just everybody agrees with what's being?
You need a motion?
Go for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation in terms of allocating the ARPA funds as, as described in the attachment, in the staff report.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Sonny Santinez, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Benton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. So I think we've concluded all our business, unless something else is on your mind. So it is now 1:15. We're going to declare this meeting over, and we'll meet again on Monday, December 13th at 5:30 p.m. Does that sound right?
Sounds right.